Oh, get fired up. Well, it's quiet. Okay, welcome everybody online. Today is February 21st. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. This time I would please ask everyone to rise and say the pledge. Hey, would you mind leading us?
Not at all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for doing that. Everybody's seen the agenda. If there's no additions or changes, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll go right into our agenda. These next items are action items. And the first one is the meeting minutes of February 13th.
I did not read them since I wasn't here.
Give my corrections. I think I sent you.
I'll make a motion to accept the eight minutes of February 13th.
I'll second.
Okay, there was one. One of them that didn't get a second.
I got that, Mr. Chairman.
You got that one? Okay. So we got a motion to second approve the minutes of February 13th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our next agenda item. Is the contract amendment with out of Department of Commerce on the CDBG grant for the yellow pine water treatment system. I think that's in your packet. Doug, this is, this isn't really much of a change, is it? And what did we, what did we amend? That's what I was trying to figure out.
The dollar amount increased as far as what we were going to be contributing. But we got word that it's in the budget in order to do that.
Do you remember what it was? It's going to 150,000, I assume, but what was it before?
I think.
Eighty thousand?
The original that we had requested through the EDC was sixty-five. That was, or sixty-five or fifty, fifty or sixty-five.
Where's it at? Contract amendment.
Remember it was Department of Commerce. Yellow pine treatment water. This is for the Epstein Bridge, correct?
No.
Oh, no, this is the water treatment center. That's right. That's where I'm confused. I keep thinking of the Epstein Bridge.
And honestly, we just need to support this. This is so critical. They received their funding of, I think it's six million dollars for their water system.
CBGD, there it is.
I don't think it's that much. If you go to Attachment B, Attachment B provides the breakdown of the actual cost.
We're just.
That was for administration, 140 for construction.
They also received their, our large grant, so I don't know what these funds are for.
Ten thousand administrative professional.
Hundred fifty thousand? Is this the ICDBG funds?
Yeah.
That's a hundred fifty thousand.
Mr. Chairman, this and commissioners, this will just be a pass through. We will be paying it and then requesting the funds from the Department of Commerce. DEQ is paying a portion as well. And again, that breakdown is provided in Attachment B.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the contract amendment for the CDBG grants for the yellow pine water treatment center.
Could I second?
I'll second.
Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Sherry?
Uh huh.
Just want to look at it here. Here's an arm panel. That's, that's this one. Further down than here.
Okay, we'll move on down to our next agenda item. This is also an action item and, and I'm going to combine all these together. There's four different opioid settlement agreements, one with Allergan, one with CVS, one with Teva, Walgreens, and Walmart. So there's five of them. And basically what this does is puts us into that settlement. Group. And in your packet, you have the settlement agreements for all of them. Then that, depending on how big the group is, that determines how much money we would end up getting in the settlement. So I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the opioid settlement agreements with Allergan, CVS, Teva, Walgreens, and Walmart.
The only question I had on this before we vote, so this is just stating that we will join with the state in doing these. This doesn't set dollar amounts or how we spend or anything else. This is just participation only.
That is correct.
I started going through all these and I was going, holy cow. A question might be better.
You have to be, this basically puts us a part of the settlement.
So I'll second that.
Would you second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And I am going to love to see what we get out of all of that because definitely have some mental health issues we need to address.
This is going to take me a minute to sign, so. Need a break or something like.
Ryan, did you get blown off your hill this morning?
Uh, yeah, that was, uh.
It was blowing hard this morning.
Yeah, we were, we come over the hill and you can see the sun just barely tweaking through the clouds and get over little daughter. It's like, is blue sky over here?
Yeah, exactly. Totally differing this scenario on this side of Donner. Why, Juan?
Nice little mild breeze over here.
Yeah, I got out of my car and I went, wait a minute, what happened to the wind?
Well, it's a good test for the wind shear on the, on the buildings up there.
You know what? It was, it was surprising, but like right across from Elk Creek Church, kind of in that area, there's a guy that's built a berm up and it was blowing the snow off the top of that berm right into your windshield. So it wasn't like down on the ground. So it was like this total whiteout right at your windshield. And I thought, holy cow, who knew, who would have thought of that?
Trees on top of that.
Exactly, yeah. He better be landscaping that one.
That's our state committee member.
Um, no, not his. It was just south of that, but yeah.
Oh, that's that.
It's a new one.
Yeah, that subdivision.
Yeah.
That's a bigger berm.
It was, it was definitely blowing this morning, I recall.
Well, we're going to go on down to our agenda. Our next item is an action item because Juan's here. This is approved Personnel Services Con, Personal Services Contract with Emergency Services Manager Juan Bonilla. And Connor, can you refresh us kind of where we are? We're at thirty?
Just a little over thirty.
Thirty-one? I don't remember the exact number.
I can give it to you. Chairman, it's thirty-one thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-four cents.
Thirty-one, four ninety-three, seventy-four. And is that working out for you okay, or do you want some more?
We can discuss that. It's a nice budget, but it's working out fine.
Okay. So is there anything else we need to add to the contract or take away?
No, it's just the suggestion I had to have it sunset on September 30th, so it matches the actual granting process that also sunsets on the 30th of September. And then we can redo a contract in September for the year. That was my only suggestion. And it's just mainly for paperwork and so that I, we're always leaving like a few hundred dollars because of the transition. We won't do that anymore.
So, um. You're on a state budget now, January 1 to December 31st?
Yeah, that's what, well, that's what the contract is. It's, it's usually from the first year to the end of the year, but if we went to.
So we'll have to amend the dates on that contract. Other than that, I don't think there'll be.
You want to back it up to the 30th one?
Just till September 30th, yeah. And then we'll redo a contract from there, from October 1st to September 30th. So it's in line with the grant that is awarded on October 1st and ends on the 30th.
Okay, any more questions for Juan?
Not on this.
So, uh, I'd entertain a motion?
Move that we approve the Personal Services Contract with our EMS manager, Juan Bonilla.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Before we vote, I just want to say, Juan, thanks for all your help.
Don't leave yet.
You've done a great job with, with the fires and all the other stuff and we appreciate that because for a long time there, we didn't have one of these guys. And so it takes, it makes our job a lot easier here as well. So I appreciate that. So.
Mr. Chairman, do you, so we, in the contract currently, it indicates from February 21st, 2023, and expires on February 21st, 2024 with the requested amendment. Do you want me to?
Yeah, if you could amend your motion to end the contract on September 30th.
Of 2023, and then we'll do a new contract then.
My, um, I will amend my motion.
Thank you.
As determined to September 30th to, for contract end. Thanks, Doug, for that catch.
And you're good with that? Neil?
Yep.
So we got a motion to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And again, thank you very much for your service, your help.
It actually, it actually, I was already doing it before I was EM, so it just, you know. It makes it a little easier. And the commit, my, our, my commissioners are more in support of it, so, um, because they know the benefits of me continuing that networking at a state level, so, and federal level.
That was a question.
It's good for everyone all around.
Did you go to the one at the end of IAC down in Boise?
What, the cybersecurity one?
Yeah.
No, because I, I went to other cybersecurity ones at actual the Idaho Emergency Manager Office.
I guess what I'm trying to say is there's, IAC's got a, a group now of emergency managers, just so you know, get involved with that.
I get all of the notes from that.
Okay.
Well, that was a lot of the conversation that came out of that IAC conference was they had a speaker there that day that was the emergency manager when the Las Vegas shooting happened. And he went through a whole conversation about what we should come back and ask our emergency manager. So you're going to hate me in the next week or two.
That's fine, ask away.
Well, there was a lot of information. Well, first of all, we found out through the Four Corners fire that Elk Creek Church maybe just face specifically is a Red Cross. Um, it's not activated, but it is a Red Cross. What do you call it, Fay?
It is the Red Cross Evacuation Center for fires, flood, and all that. And then I would, Red Cross gets notified, then they notify me, and then I set up the center and.
Okay.
Get it supplied and everything. Yeah. I think I'm the only one in Valley County that has that certification.
Okay.
Fay, can I ask you a question? Isn't Cascade Community Church also?
Um, I'm not aware. I think that it is, yes.
I think so too.
It covers this end of the valley and then Elk Creek does the northern part of the valley.
I know they have in the past. That's what it is.
But they were talking about doing training, live training, you know, with these types of centers and actually activating this. And so I thought that that was an interesting thing. We, I, to my knowledge, we've never done like an emergency, you know, response training with the community itself. Um, I don't know what you guys do. I'd like some input there as far as, you know, how, how are we jointly training for these types of things? The only, I mean, I think you did a fabulous job. You're smiling. See, I said you're going to hate me. During the Four Corners fire, I loved all of it, but I thought the communication back to the community just within the first couple of days, we may, could have improved. And so therefore I'm just looking at what the next event, you know, I mean, in this situation, that next event that occurs, how can we improve on what we did? And we've never done any reconstruction conversation between the commissioners and you as far as what is that next event? What could we have improved on? What, what should we improve on? And he had a lot of recommendations. He actually said, don't use Red Cross. He actually said, do a lot of the things on the ground here. Um, there was a, it was just a really great conversation on how to prepare for an event that none of us hopes that we ever see. But obviously, our world is changing a little bit. Our innocence is being taken away one little snippet at a time right now. And we have a lot of opportunity for some type of a mass event up here that I would hate to see that we're not prepared for. And honestly, I just don't know if we are. You came back and asked.
So I wouldn't say we're not prepared, first of all. Since I've been chief, we've been diligent at the district level, at Donley District level, to bring back the Local Emergency Planning Committee, which is one of the strongest in the states. We have huge support from all the stakeholder agencies and support from having one of you attend those meetings. We have subcommittees within those meetings that are always looking at hazard mitigation. One of them being mass casualty and multi-incident events. I'm able to monitor that as a chief and as emergency manager because the chair is my deputy chief for the district. So I wouldn't say we're ill-prepared. I would say we're probably more prepared than the majority, if not all of the counties, except for probably Ada, who, you know, they have hundreds of thousands of dollars funding for this. One thing I would say is, is communication is always an issue. We knew there was communication issues with our evacuees. Uh, but it's a two-way street there. It wasn't just communications that wasn't coming from us. It was them not wanting to hear our communications at certain points because they had a different opinion. So that has to be a factor as well. One thing is, is one thing I did take from the Four Corners fire and after action reports with not one team, but three teams, um, was due to COVID, the lack of uh, understanding the network of individuals participating at such a high, complex, multi-agency, multi-county, um, incident. So what we're doing is, uh, what I brought last week to the table was, uh, we're doing a three-pronged effect to encourage, uh, those communications within our own county. Number one is the policy group holder meeting. I'm waiting for, um, the literature to be published at the Idaho Emergency Management because we just revised what's the actual roles of all the policymakers, uh, in incidents, so that it makes it easier for emergency managers to understand what to expect for them and what they should expect from their emergency manager. So we will be having that, uh, sooner rather than later. And the second prong again is going to be taking all of the responding agencies and growing upon that so they understand what they should be expecting from their policymakers and from the emergency manager and what I should be expecting from them and what knowledge they should have. And the third prong is a sand table and drill event that would allow for us to do a preseason, get everybody at the table and discuss everybody's roles and actually play those roles out so that we're better prepared, uh, for the upcoming season. And the, the, uh, we have a mass casualty event that we're going to try to do this summer, if not early fall of this year, specific to involving all of the hospitals, dispatch, all the responding agencies, and the policy group makers, um, on how we would handle that type of incident and casualty list. We try to do those every other year. Um, we haven't done them in a couple of years because of COVID, so we're going to bring that back. Usually we do it at a school or we've done it at the ice skating rink where we have multiple patients and we're dealing with all types of scenario and types of, different types of patients to deal with. Uh, and we involve the hospitals. They can see their capacities. We involve dispatch so they can understand the communication needs, um, and what the, and we can work those out at a, at an event like that rather than when it hits the fan. So, um, that has been ongoing since I've been chief, even before EM. Uh, our other is, is the fire working group. We probably have the best fire working group in the Northwest, um, is what I've been told. And it's not just because I'm the chair. It's because we have so many agencies that are involved, the stakeholder agencies. We talk to each other. We work with each other. Doesn't matter if you're federal, state, or local. We all have the same voice. We have subcommittees who are doing educational types with ourselves, with our community. Um, we are very prepared and we're very networked when it comes to the fire working group. And that is a subgroup of the Local Emergency Planning Committee. So when it comes to being prepared for those types of incidences, even the Four Corners, yes, we are prepared. We understand that. But there's one thing that's lacking. And that is the policy group doesn't understand all of that. So that's what I'm hoping to fix this year, uh, after looking at after action reports and get the policy group 100% on board and understanding and actually meeting some people so that they know who they would be talking to or information that they should be receiving. So that we can make that work forward. So I learned a lot from this last fire. It's the hardest fire I've ever been on my entire career of twenty-some years, um, the hardest fire that the state's been on because it involves so many things. Multiple sheriffs, multiple, uh, multiple ranger districts, multiple fire departments, uh, responding agencies, state and federal agencies, local agencies. It was a very complex one. Thirty-some days, and I'm still dealing with Four Corners today because of granting and all these other things. So it doesn't end when the fire's over and snow's on the ground. It takes me about two years to get all the paperwork and everything in line so that we continue to use benefits learned in education and training and experience and any monies that are available and distributing them out. Um, I know we do have two grants now that are going through, not just the one. Um, so I'm hoping we get both of those. It looks like we have a very good chance of getting a portion, if not most of that, 1.5 million dollars that's on the table.
Awesome.
I would say again that we are prepared, uh, at higher than most. Um, there's always things to learn. Communication is always an issue, um, and we'll work it through. Now with the Red Cross, uh, I did talk to the Red Cross multiple times during the Four Corners, uh, but the sheriff and I both felt that we had handled it with using local resources and local businesses to handle those individuals and had three individual spots open that may remain open through the entire event, even after the event, to help people with all types of things, uh, during their evac process. So, uh, I did learn one thing is the health and human services has made it easy for emergency managers to take to the state to ask for specific special needs patients. Uh, they learned from their fires this last year and some evacuations throughout the country that that really helps the emergency management office so that we can distribute if we're evacuating, what individuals need to be helped to evacuate and continue follow-up with those individuals and how they're helping themselves if they needed, and if they need any help, um, during the evacuation process. So we will get that HIPAA thing removed and have that document that you have to take chain of custody at, distribute that to the agencies, and then from the agencies, they monitor those individuals. And once we're done, we have to prove that we destroyed that, that document. But that is available. That's one thing they just started. Um, I just learned about it a couple of weeks ago. Um, so that's another tool in our toolbox to use in the event we need to see those, those needs, those patients might need, um, because they're being removed from their homes or whatever it is. So there is another document there.
Well, and I think too, Sherry, there's a lot of inner county and I'm, some of them legal, some of them more oral agreements. I remember early, early in my career in this job that we had an agreement with Ada County for refrigerated trucks. If we had a mass casualty, there was agreements with some of the local grocery stores for kind of an open line of credit, so to speak, for food and water and that, those kinds of specific needs for the group. Um, and then one thing I have learned in the mass casualty is that we're going to have to have some help in the coroner's office. I mean, you can't expect one or two people to handle that load. So those are the kind of, uh, contacts that we need to make as commissioners with other counties of, hey, let's help each other out here, share that, those resources. And, and, you know, I think the important thing that what, what Juan group, Juan's group does is that it updates that information every year. Because everybody knows we have new district rangers, we have new commissioners, we have new folks in new places every year. Keeping that contact information current is probably the most important part is.
Do we do that as commissioners though, or is that Juan's responsibilities or?
It's part of the emergency management plan. That's all, that's all the stuff he's doing already.
So I would ask, I, I'm not on those committees. And so I would ask how you would like to handle this, but I'd like to see Juan come and report to us quarterly, you know, what, what is going on in the county. This is being recorded. People are listening to it. I think as far as open lines of communication and transparency with our community, we should know the readiness of our community. So should our community. So I don't know if you want to.
Well, and I would recommend that you attend from like the LEPC and some of these EMP meetings that Juan's been having. Um, you know, I don't think there's a conflict that both of us or all three of us are there as long as we're not sitting together doing county business to learn this because.
I don't think we.
There's a lot more to it than even Juan can keep up with.
That's why we have two big groups because I can't keep track of all of that. And we have subcommittees within those groups to keep track. I, I monitor all those and I'm up to date on all those because I have chairs and, um, group leaders who are like, here's what we're doing. Here's what we got going. And all I do is set the objectives of what we want to meet for the year, and then they give me updates throughout. Now, uh, I have no problem having the fire working group chair, me, and the emergency manager, me, and the LEPC chairman come quarterly and give an update of what's happening, uh, with those two groups. That's not a problem at all. We could, that's, that's done. I mean, we could do that every quarter.
I think it'd be great. We hear from all of our directors. We hear from everybody what's happening within the county, just so that we're all informed. When people ask questions, we're informed. And so I think, you know, having our emergency manager here on a more regular basis reporting, I think it's a good idea.
That's what you want. I think that's very.
That's easily done. That's, we can consider that done. We'll make sure that happens. And I'll get with, uh, Mr. Miller and we'll figure out what, what months work for that. And I can make sure that we have a summary of what's happening in that quarter and what we're looking for the next quarter.
Well, and I think it's important too, because you guys would learn the fact that, you know, people ask me all the time, why do we send money to both our local airports? Well, that's in case we get stranded, both what, what just happened up here. We can, we can authorize people to ship in food and water or medical or whatever we need because we're supporting those airports. That's why we do that. And it can also be used as a firefighting base for firefighting needs as well. So there's lots of, of little things on the side that probably aren't written down, but are all kind of understood, so to speak. And, um, probably what we should do is start making a list of all those little handshake agreement kind of stuff, but. And um probably what we should do is start making a list of all those little handshake agreement kind of stuff, but. Me, it's always amazing when we have an emergency situation like this, how people pull together. Everybody, hey, what can we do to help, I mean.
Well, we saw that at the four corners.
It's just phenomenal how the people come out of the woodwork to help, so.
Well, and having that channel of communication open so they do know how to help. I mean, I just started pushing out, I think it was Cascade's fire group. That was actually receiving donations for everybody, you know, you push that out, this is how you can help, you may not be able to be boots on the ground, but financially you can support this effort through this. You know, avenue, and I think just having that as a more open communication would be helpful for our regional community. Um and honestly, you get more volunteers that way too, if people know what's happening out there and they're going, huh, that's I'm interested in that, I'm interested in helping in those ways. I think it brings people to the table to have greater conversations as needed, so.
It's being it's being able to. Direct those volunteers. That's that's all.
We did really well with the four corners with all our volunteers and our volunteer uh areas. That we're able to use, I mean, it was a very good conversation and working through, so.
And you're talking about just people that come out and say, hey, what can I do? Not not your organized bunch, but just people.
Yeah, and we had we had them helping at each each of the facilities and. Um we had like people always asking like, can I provide food, do you have individuals who need food, they and they were helping their neighbors and.
That's awesome.
So much so that we didn't have anybody really utilizing our V V evac zones because. Enough neighbors volunteered to just take people in.
That's awesome, I love that in our community.
We had like maybe two and then there'd be like two at the church and then within a day someone had came and said, you come stay with me, don't stay at the church anymore, we'll take care of you. So I mean, it was, it made it really, that's why we didn't need Red Cross because. So many locals stood stood up and said, we'll take care of them.
To the plate, that's awesome.
Some of the things that I heard at Naco last week, um so the forest service has a huge. Uh plan to basically burn a lot in the next few years. And so that's gonna impact locals, I mean, it's gonna impact our local. Air quality and everything else, and there's a lot of conversations going around that, but one of the things that came up that I thought very interesting. Was that they stated that if we declare emergency declarations on the forest, and I don't know if that's us or the forest service, and I'm gonna find that out. But it overrides NIPA and any lawsuit flexibility. If there is a burn that's required in order to protect. Have you ever heard anything like that?
Yeah, because that's for back burning. And that's because over the last few years, they've had such lawsuits that come after the fact because of back burning and. Uh property owners saying they burnt so many acres and then they sue for that. There actually were arrests at the Mesa Fire.
Is that the one in New Mexico?
Or over the hill. On that fire where they did a backburn and the landlord was so upset and then he said they were trespassing and all that, got into an argument and they arrested two firefighters for backburning. So um and then there was a lawsuit, so this is just. In lieu of those lawsuits, let's make some provisions to better aid firefighting technique.
One did add a study, declared emergency on their site, did they declare an emergency?
So they had.
We needed the backburn so we could control the growth on that.
Right, but it didn't sound like this.
Eastern flank.
Solve that situation.
Yeah, because they were talking about doing away with NIPA, so I'm going, hmm, how could we use that to our advantage, because four corners should have burned. You know, controlled before it ever burnt like it did, but.
Well, it was scheduled to, it's still scheduled to.
I know, and I've heard that they're gonna do it this year.
To do controlled burns on it?
It was scheduled prior to. And it's still scheduled to, by the way, it's on the docket for burning, but. They're gonna wait till next fall since it's so.
Well, and I think one of the things they learned out of that fire in New Mexico was not to do controlled burns in the spring. Do it all in the fall, so the weather will eventually put them out, but. Do them in the spring, they just got bigger and bigger and got away from them.
We have a lot on our docket to burn this spring, so that's.
There's a lot this spring to burn, there's a big docket.
I think in the roadless commission, we figured it was about five hundred and fifty thousand acres a year in Idaho. To be burned. So that's gonna be a pretty big issue, but I think that.
And it's not just the feds who are burning, it states is burning as well.
Probably fifty, I don't even know what percentage of our forest is not. Very good timber, it's all real small, too thick. And it's stuff and so that's the only treatment they really have is to go in and burn it, you can't gain any value by logging it or. Grinding it or massacring it, that's just really super expensive. So that's the cheapest way is to go in and burn, but I find it interesting that. They're allowed to do that, but we're not allowed to burn our construction pile at the.
We can still do our Woody debris.
It just doesn't make sense sometimes.
And they talked a lot back there in the workforce development council about hiring future. Future firefighters, basically through um the apprenticeship mentorship programs. Have you guys looked at that at all? There was a a large conversation about trying to partner with kids that are either in high school or right out of high school. And actually get them involved in the firefighting community.
So we have a junior cadet program in Donley.
Okay.
So when you talk to the east coast people. They have hundreds of people applying for junior cadet program because it's tradition, it's family, everybody from grandpa, grandma. To generations, it's pretty much. You're raised to be a fire EMS or law enforcement auxiliary person. Here in the west, that is not the case, so. Junior cadet programs are hard, I think the most you ever had, most students in Donley is at seven, and I think Cascade had like eight or ten one year. But generally, it's just one or two or three.
What is the?
So they're volunteered and it's we do it as a career exploration, so we do from freshman all the way to senior. Um and they get to participate. Um that everything the state allows us to do, they do train, they wear they wear packs, they wear gear. That kind of stuff.
So when I why I just heard you say that the state will allow you to do, it's like the workforce development council is trying to figure out apprenticeships. How do we help pay, because there is money out there within that apprenticeship realm, how do we help pay? Uh to be able to. Hire, you know, these kids that may not want to volunteer, they have to financially make something. Is there any rules or regulations against that?
So it's just whatever the child labor laws are, which we follow even as a volunteer because you're working.
Is that sixteen years old, I think it's sixteen.
Yeah, and then they're not allowed to do any live burn, drive vehicles, run any equipment at all, but they can do all the other stuff, so. We keep them pretty busy with that. And it's a whole year program.
I think there's two parts to that stewardship program, there's. Part where you actually pay a kid a salary and then there's a part that you cover. Whichever, like in this case, the fire department's expenses to. Bring that kid in and help him, so there's two different things that.
And there's lots of granting, so we get ours from N B F C's Fire Corps. For to help fund the program and then we have a couple of local businesses that give us money. Um for uniforms and food and that kind of stuff, so.
Hey, well, um yeah, get with Doug and this, if you want to do it quarterly. Whatever your schedule works.
Whatever works, well, I'll get with. Um Doug and we'll just work out some dates in advance and then I'll just make sure that my. That our L E P C chair is aware that he has to come do a summary with me.
He gets to, rephrase that please. Gets to.
He'll be like, what? It's not a big deal.
Gets to come visit with us. That's what all of our other people say, they get to come visit with us.
Anyway.
All right, well, thanks Juan, appreciate your help today.
Mr. Chairman, uh I could get Juan's signature on that agreement, I don't know if the other commissioners have signed it.
You guys sign all of that?
Any questions you have, just call me, I have seventeen minutes, I have no problem.
Looking at transparency too, Juan, I mean, I'm looking at how can we use Mackenzie, I mean, she was your P I O through all of this, how do we put information out? In the public realm, making it as transparent as possible, a lot of the people that were at I A C have full time. Emergency managers in house, I have no idea what they do, you know, or why they they pay full time people, but. Um lots of information sharing, and so I'm just trying to get it to the public. Now, this is what we're doing on your behalf, this is how we're spending your taxpayer dollars. This is what we're doing, you know, for future planning. So if we get it on record every quarter, then maybe the newspaper will pick up some of that, run with it with some articles or. You know, maybe Mackenzie can put that some of this of what we're working on in our monthly uh star news ad. I think that's a good thing to just share information.
I have no problem with that, um. So when you brought the full time thing up real quick, uh. You're lucky because I'm a fire chief.
Absolutely.
E M, so you don't have to pay it full time. I tell you. When I, if I decide to ever leave. You're probably gonna need a full time emergency manager. And you're gonna have to come up with that funding mechanism.
And that's a big salary, yep.
Because it's a big job and it's entailed in so many things.
You find yourself working a lot with our grant writer?
A lot of conversations, usually it's she's trying to do a grant or finding, trying to find grant mechanisms. Or I have to explain to her like. Generators are four letter word in FEMA granting right now, so it don't. You have to have some provisions in place to put generators on, those types of conversations.
Oh yeah, cybersecurity was the other one that was a huge Naco conversation, which I'll update here in a little while, but. Generators power loss was part of that conversation. I have no idea if we have generators in county or not, is that part of emergency management service? Is that part of your job?
I don't think so.
What do you got, Juan, about another twenty years in you?
Steve's preparing.
Just for five more. And then a couple more years as emergency manager and then I'll do something else.
All right, thanks Juan. Um we're gonna go on down to our next agenda item, this is also an action item, this is a discussion decision on ARPA fund approval of one million dollars to the West Central Mountain. Housing Trust.
Chairman, if you could just give me five minutes to.
Got a bunch of people online that are all out of the area, so.
We're a little early, so. Be good to take, if you need a break, this might be the time to take it.
Give you some. Give you the highlights.
Hello?
We're getting set up, guys, for everybody online.
I can hear you.
I'm Mary.
Are we at the commissioner's meeting?
We are, yes. Give us just a couple of minutes.
Okay, so the people there can hear me, correct?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and I just wanted to call as president of the the North, what the um the housing trust here in Valley County and Adams County. We wanted to present and I and I haven't been able to hear anything anybody else has said. But I know that Sherry Mockman is is presenting with uh Chance Hobbs and that we're asking for funds. So that we can do some projects primarily in Cascade and I wanted to put my support towards that, we have. The monies of our own to put to um as seed money to start our this. And then also any any funds that we can. Use to bring in and we were hoping to do possibly seven units or a threeplex or a fourplex. And Chance has been working with one of the landowners of a new subdivision down there and I and I believe it would be very much. In the in the tone of what we are, the commissioners at Valley County has gotten a lot of feedback, I know. That they want to have the um you know, they want to have housing and that's our goal too. And these would be rentals that would be used as as uh for for people that need housing and then and then we always. As we grow, we end up with more and more rentals, we have eight in New Meadows and those were all built, that would be in the same kind of. Um project that we're trying to do in Cascade and those were built with the housing company and in conjunction with Idaho. Um I H F A and then we also have four units in Donley right now and those were rehab. We rehab some of the the wet meadows at West Mountain and then we have one unit in McCall, so we have a history and we have an inventory. And this would be adding to that and I just wanted to put my support behind that, I think that. Your constituents in the in Valley County would very much like to see this kind of projects and more.
So this is Commissioner Hasbrook, I'm sorry, but I don't know who is speaking, just now, can you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is Mary Knuckles and and I'm the president of the West Central Mountains Housing Trust. And we're our our goal and we that we worked with economic development um people originally to start the trust. And then and then we've been going, we're in the we're independent of that now, but we also still work together. And so we've been working at this for quite a number of years and Cascade has been one of the places we want to be able to to put some units. And so that's that's one of the reasons that this application is coming through to you is because the Cascade is one of our. Our goals, we have some money that is as earmarked just for Cascade to start our projects.
Okay, thanks, Mary, I appreciate that, and then we have, it looks like Kelly Hill, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Mary. If you want to go ahead and wait for just a minute, let us let us do a little bit of a recap here to start, okay?
Okay, I'll listen.
Well, this time we'll turn it over to Sherry, I know she's been working on this and we'll see where it goes.
Okay, so let me give you some background on the trust itself, on the um in the meeting here, you're gonna see most of our board. We are missing Chance Hobbs, I'm still hoping that Chance is gonna come in, but you've got Lindsey Harris, Johnny Howard. Uh Kelly Miller and Kelly Hill all online, I am also a board member. So this started in, gosh, Johnny, how long ago did we start the housing trust? Um must have been oh eight, no, not oh eight, that was the Economic Development Council, this would have been fifteen. So this has been in place now for, this is the eighth year uh through the Economic Development Council. And this board was specifically designed in order to work on local housing issues, to identify. Funding mechanisms, to identify processes where we could actually obtain and support local housing into the future. When we started this, I worked with the mayor in McCall and we went out and researched what was most successful. For this type of work and look to the Jackson Hole Housing Trust in order to design this board. A trust actually can take both private donations and public donations. In order to to accomplish their tasks, which a housing authority, which is what McCall is looking at, cannot, it's a quasi governmental, this is not. This is a five oh one C three nonprofit specifically designed to accomplish local housing. So this board has evolved and transitioned and through that time, they have been able to acquire thirteen units, as Mary stated. Within the West Central Mountains. During that time also, they had a benefactor who gave them a unit to get started here in Cascade. They've sold that unit and reserved the funds that they made on it in order to. Accomplish a Cascade project, so I believe that, tell me if I'm wrong, Mary, but I think it's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that's sitting right now in a fund. To partner.
Approximately, yeah.
Approximately that, to partner with a project here in Cascade. So within the last two months, um we asked to expand the housing trust board to make it a regional effort. So they are now have representatives, we will always have a commissioner on there, I am that commissioner's um. Seat at this moment in time. We've asked Cascade to identify, Judy Nasula has been. Working with us until she can identify someone from Cascade that will be actually appointed. We've asked Donley to appoint, we've asked McCall to appoint. New Meadows does have Kayla Gardner, that is their representative currently. And then we have members at large, so our members at large, we look at what the skill sets are of these members. We have Catherine Alberg, who just recently retired from the housing authority, she's got, or that, what was it called? A housing, a housing company that you actually partnered with them and built the Springs in McCall. Chance Hobbs is also on this board and Chance um. Built the Donley project, so we have got two people that have built with I H F A funding. Uh projects in Valley County, very well, not they're extremely knowledgeable on this type of of uh local housing. Kelly Hill is the owner of Done Right Management for property management and uh. Knowing what the market will hold and bear as far as rents. Kelly Miller is a real estate agent, uh Lindsey Harris is our. Economic Development Council Chair, so there is the connection and will continue into the future with the E D C to make sure that housing is always a top priority. So the reason for this request right now is that the state has. So the reason for this request right now is that the state has a portion of that fifty million dollar ARPA pool left. And a portion of that pool, I think it's twenty-two million dollars that's left, has to go, or a portion of that has to go to rural Idaho projects. And I believe that that amount is six million dollars out of that bucket that's still left. Those funds, that grant request, that next bucket is due in March. And so there is a very short time window in order to put together a project that we can actually put, um, housing on the ground. Through our Clearwater Economic Development Strategy and, um, what they're working on for us financially, they've already identified part of the housing shortfall. And honestly, I don't know if you guys have seen that report yet. I don't know if I, if I had requested it because I knew that they were working on that. Okay, so within that, they have already identified on the low end, we need eleven hundred units. On the high end, we need fifteen hundred units in the next ten years. This request would be three units. As you can tell, it is gonna be, I, I don't even know how we accomplish the task to support the amount of growth in this area. So we'll make sure you guys get that, um, report. But it's, it's a moment in time where there is state funding available. There is federal money coming through the ARPA buckets that are available. NACO spoke heavily to the fact that there's CDBG grants for five hundred thousand dollars available right now. They are specifically targeting those housing buckets. Which is another funding source that we can use to work with our funding, whatever this mechanism is for grant match. The, the million dollars that we are requesting to go to the trust would be used in whatever way gets the biggest return on the investment. So, right now there's state match. I mean, the state, the more you can put down locally toward that state pool actually is better for, to be able to attain those grants. There is federal money in the CDBG program. But there's also, uh, local contribution. Idaho First Bank actually financed one of the units. Um, I think that, Mary, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they required a thirty percent down payment in order to.
Right.
Fund that.
Yeah, we were able to bring in funds from the builder. It's a Broken Ridge condo. The builder participated in, in giving us a good price on the property. And we, and, and so real estate commissions were not paid by the trust when it, when it closed. We also had monies from, um, the lot money and McCall that we used for part of our down payment. And then we also were able to, because there were new units, they're, they have a program where you get a, a ten thousand dollar, um, amount of money, it's approximately that, for, um, hookup for if you put a deed restriction on it, which we did. So there were, there were multiple sources for the basic down payment. But then Idaho First was a, what, uh, they did a regular loan with us, which we pay as part of our, the monies that we get for rent.
Thank you, Mary. Um, in order to create housing that's affordable at the local level to where our residents can actually pay the rents, you've got to have a large down payment. Because the cost of construction today just does not bear, um, just a twenty percent down payment. Or even, you know, low, you've gotta have at least twenty percent down for financing, but you can't make that pencil, it doesn't match. And so we've got to design programs where we actually have funding down to be able to make these things cash flow. Cash flow is really critical. This trust moving forward really needs a, a director, somebody who's totally focused on housing. That's what has been successful in every other area. Jackson Hole actually has a thousand units in their trust right now. Um, because they have a long-term, they have an executive director totally focused on it and is constantly working for philanthropic donations, federal donations, state donations. They're looking at it as a, as an entire tool to try and do this.
So these aren't, these aren't buildings they built, they just have that in the mechanism of the trust?
Correct, they're all deed restricted. They will be in there, in the trust pool, uh, in perpetuity unless they choose to sell them. And that's what we're looking for. The thirteen units that are out there right now all have deed restrictions on them. They will remain in there unless it becomes viable to take equity out and, and, you know, purchase something else. This is a large conversation because federal funding right now, IHFA funding, what's available to the communities is thirty percent AMI, average median income. Very low-income individuals. I had large conversations with the HUD undersecretary when I was in NACO about changing those AMI restrictions. Because at thirty percent, you've got drug abuse, you've got mental health issues. At that kind of funding mechanism, they need to offer wraparound support. Mental health issues, substance abuse issues, our senior abuse issues. So thirty percent is really, really low. Sixty to eighty percent AMI is where you're starting to get individuals that are local labor. Some of ours would have qualified eighty percent. Even at sixty percent, it's difficult. So we're asking HUD to look at those thirty and sixty percent AMI mechanisms. And today's build cost, again, that is, that's not your firefighters. That's not our police force, that's not our teachers, our nurses. Eighty percent maybe because our AMI was adjusted this year in Valley County. Our average median income is up to eighty-two thousand, up from fifty-two thousand last year. I know everybody's eyebrows went up and that's true, our AMI is adjusting. So it's, it's because of a lot of the retirees that are moving here that had that level of income or are remote workers. So it's helping some, but we also have to think outside the box. Where we really need housing right now is eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Unfortunately, that's not where the builders can build. It's still so high, the, the building costs here are still so high that we have to find down payment assistance. And assistance with bringing our loan, loans down to be able to get it into a rentable income space. So a housing trust, I'll say with one thing more and then I'd like the others on the call to be able to offer some thoughts. Um, and those in the, the, um, our citizens. But, a, a trust can do many things. As we build a pool of funds, there are different mechanisms and vehicles that are available um, to allow locals homeownership. Homeownership should be something that we are focused on. Right now in the country, NACO focused heavily on rentals. Because rental income is the only thing that locals are able to afford now. And that's if there's multiple bedrooms in a unit so that they can actually partner up and, um, and share their rental expense. Right now, average rent in Valley County is probably, you know, for a three-bedroom, two-bath can be two thousand, twenty-five hundred a month. Very expensive. Our local labor force at the county could not afford it. I don't know, our first responders I know probably cannot afford that. So what is that balance? I know, I couldn't afford it either. So what is that balance? And one of the mechanisms that we can use are down payment assistance programs. They're out there, they're federal, IHFA is, has some of those down payment assistance programs. But we don't have the avenue or the tool right now to get this information to property owners or to potential purchasers. There's a huge education behind readying yourself to purchase a home, purchasing a home, getting your credit score where it needs to be to purchase a home, down payment assistance programs, there's a whole educational component to it that we're lacking in Valley County. We've, we have a housing trust, they have done all the work they possibly could do as a volunteer board. They need some additional support to take this to the next step. Because this is not a conversation that's going to change in the next twenty-five years. At fifteen hundred housing units required, it's gonna be all hands on deck in every way we can possibly find in order to help start accomplishing some of these goals. And so it's, right now is the moment where with these ARPA funds, we can help start identifying buckets that we can invest in that creates a sustainable program in the future. I fully support the housing trust, I helped design and develop the housing trust, have been engaged in the conversation. They have done everything they can as a volunteer board. It's time to strengthen their resources and create a sustainable future for a housing conversation in Valley County. ARPA funds, these are one-time investments. In my opinion, this is the way these should be spent. When we did our survey, the housing was number two from the four hundred and fifty respondents we received. Broadband was number one, which with the broadband news we just got, that's taken that off our plate short-term. Housing is our next opportunity to do that. And with these state funds out there and the potential to do a project with those state funds and match those to create as many units on the ground as we possibly can, I think this is a moment in time that we do that. And that's why I've requested the conversation now. So with that, I will allow others to talk. Lindsey, do you wanna go next?
Good morning, everybody, sorry, I'm, I'm ill at home, so you don't, you don't see my bright shining face today. Um, um, yes, I mean, Sherry, thanks for giving us the opportunity. Um, I understand, um, in a, in a perfect world, we, we can afford to, to build many units at the, at the amount of funds that we're asking for. But unfortunately, that's not the day and age we're, we're living in. And this is a great opportunity to acquire more units that we know will be protected in perpetuity and go to working local families. Um, I do have full faith in the West Central Mountains Housing Trust Board. I've been very impressed in the last few months since joining, um, with the group that's there and being educated on how they're able to, um, craft, craft funds together to acquire units. It's, it's rather impressive and, um, this would be a huge boost. Also, I don't know, Sherry mentioned, um, in Cascade currently, the housing trust does not, um, have any units. So this would be, now make it so, I believe, um, I'm not certain about Donnelly yet. Um, but at least three out of four communities would have housing trust units in those communities um, to help spread out where those units are. Um, so that's kinda, those are just a couple of the points I, I wanted to touch on, um, and I'm sure others will back, so.
Thanks Lindsey, Johnny, would you like to go next?
Thank you, uh, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. I think that Sherry's laid out the background and basis for the housing trust. And as Lindsey just said, we've been trying to get units on the ground in Cascade because currently Cascade, uh, is the only major community in that region in the, the coverage area of the trust that doesn't have any units available, uh, with the trust. So this opportunity to receive these funds is what'll allow us to be able to move forward with housing in Cascade. As Sherry mentioned, we've been organized, I thi, I think you're right, Sherry, since twenty fifteen. There are just a couple of us who remain on the board that were charter members. And also, as Sherry mentioned, uh, working as a volunteer board is challenging. And I do think that we are at the point where we can take that a step to become much more effective with some additional funding that would allow us to be able to have a dedicated, um, director or, I haven't decided on job title yet, but someone who is dedicated full-time to doing the work of the housing trust. So I urge the, the commissioners to seriously consider this request for funding for housing in, in the Cascade area.
Thanks Johnny, Kelly Miller?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Kelly Miller, I'm also on the board. And, you know, my input is, of course, we, everyone hears, we need housing, we need affordable housing, we need affordable housing. As a Realtor, I know anybody who wants to be a first-time buyer here in this valley, um, they have to qualify for at least five hundred thousand dollars. That's not very many first-time buyers. As a local, I've had so many conversations with different people whose kids want to move back here after they've gone to college. But unless they're moving in with their parents or still living with their parents, they can't afford to live and work in this area. And that's the kind of vitality we can't lose. And then as a business manager, the first question I ask prospective employees is, do you have a place to live? Because if they ca, if they don't, their chances are they are not going to find a place to live. So we all know this is a huge issue. And we all know, everyone talks about it. And this is just the time to do something about it and to get ahead of what is just gonna be a catastrophe in our future if we can't have people living here in affordable homes. Thank you.
Thanks Kelly, and then Kelly Ho.
Hello, um, so I'm gonna come to this from a different perspective in that we, um, we have about a hundred and twenty units that we rent long-term. And unfortunately, we've seen rents climb year after year. Even with the housing prices actually going down, um, it's kinda stabiling itself. But, um, our rents are not taking that deep dive like we would hope. And, um, so we have a list of probably about twenty-five people right now on a waiting list to get into a home. And I would say a good, probably thirty to thirty-five percent of those people absolutely cannot afford anything that would even come available. So we do have some lower income housing, but those people are planning on moving out anytime soon because they know that they couldn't find anything that would, would, you know, match that rent rate. So I see a dire need there. I also, um, employ thirty employees. And it's unfortunate because we lose employees all the time to a lack of housing, affordable housing. And, um, I can see where this is a huge detriment to our area.
And then we'll wrap up. Chance Hobbs actually has a pro forma for a project in Cascade that we're proposing. And that's why, um, this grant is being requested. Chance, can you, can you finish up for us here?
Yeah, Sherry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
And you can see me.
Perfect.
So, um, yeah, thanks for taking the time. Um, I think Sherry, if you were the first one, did you give a little bit of context for the commissioners on where the housing trust is, you know, since we started, where we're at portfolio-wise?
Yes.
Okay, so you talked to them already, I mean, just where we, we made great progress is kinda where I'm trying to get to. And, and the ultimate, when we first started this with Sherry and, and Sinda and Johnny and Mary and everyone that was involved early on, the, the conversation of affordable housing is never one of the silver bullet where we get a hundred billion dollars and we get a, and we get a print houses everywhere we can. So it's a, it's a slow and steady as she goes, add units. Uh, currently, the housing trust has thirteen units that are under, uh, in full operations, collecting rents. So ARPA funds, both through IHFA and, and Idaho Housing Finance. And then the county, we're looking to target basically two projects. Um, and as I talked to Sherry, kinda go back and forth on how to present these funds. It's been my experience over the last thirteen years in affordable housing is you go after both projects, projects, but you make sure the one will hold. Um, so you can at least get one done. So our goal here is to maximize the county's ARPA funds to ultimately produce seven units, a triplex and a four-plex. Over in Raven Ridge, um, through a relationship that's been cultivated with Cody Draper, um, which I think will be a great opportunity for us in the future because he's got a head on his shoulders for affordable housing, workforce housing in Valley County. Um, sounds like he's got a couple of projects in the pipeline and is very much interested in utilizing the housing trust to come in behind him and, and take a couple lots and go build, uh, uh, some workforce stuff. So the project that, the pro forma that's been presented is based on using only. So the project, the pro forma that's been presented is based on using only Valley County ARPA funds to build a triplex. It gives us a little bit of leverage on rents where currently in the affordable housing world, you're really restricted to a 60% area median income rent, which is what the apartments in Donley, Northwest Passage that we did, those are 30% to 60%. The Springs, the 72 units of Springs and Call, those are same game, 30% to 60%. So doing an entire project just out of ARPA funds outside of IHFA does give us the ability to reach up into those income groups that tend to get left out. That's what we call the middle income at 80% to 120% area median income. That's the people that are making 50, 60, 70,000 a year, but still not able to afford the $1,800 a month rents that a lot of the market is in Valley County. So like I said, our goal is to at least get the triplex done, take the Housing Trust to 14 units, continue to build a portfolio of cash, which allows us to eventually have a snowball cash effect of the Dave Ramsey effect essentially of socking down debt and carrying forward with cash to start putting units online much more rapidly, but takes kind of some time to get the ball rolling. We are going to go in for an application of funds from Idaho Housing and Finance for a fourplex that we also have the land tied down for. And a presentation to IHFA will be one of using county ARPA funds to match IHFA's funding for a total of seven units. That would be ideal for the Housing Trust. I think that'd be ideal for the county. I mean, it's kind of a win-win-win. IHFA gets outside sources to leverage their sources, which they like to see happen. It's difficult in rural areas. So at the end of the day, that's our main target. The goal of the Housing Trust, in my mind, as we continue to have meetings, is still to, over time, build that portfolio so that we get to the point where cash flows from the portfolio do fund a full-time director position without having to come back to the county or the cities and requesting more money, but that the portfolio itself, cash flows to support itself, which creates sustainability in the future. So that's the ultimate goal. We think that using these funds to further address Valley County's housing needs is a great opportunity. I remember doing Northwest Passage and some people in Donley going, why are we doing this right now? This was 2015, 2016, and they didn't feel like, there's a couple of people there that didn't feel like that was the best use of that parcel or that we needed affordable housing at that time. And fast forward five years, and everything doubled, and now land prices have doubled and construction prices have doubled, and it has strained affordable housing even further. So one thing I know about real estate, and I'm still young, I know there's some people that have a lot more time with me, but continues to go up. We have our, we'll have our drops and things, and that's usually the time you're trying to pull the trigger to put as many units on the ground as you can and then weather the high-cost days and sock away your cash for when it corrects a little bit. So that's what we're trying to do here. We see an opportunity, lumber's corrected, pricing's starting to correct on some contractors, and so we can stretch our dollars further to get more units on the ground. So again, appreciate your time, your consideration. We're pretty excited about this. I'm really excited about the opportunity at Raven Ridge. We've been hunting for five years for opportunities like that, and they don't come around that often. So thank you. Okay.
That's our presentation at this moment in time.
So is there anyone in the audience? I know there's, like, a couple of folks might want to step up, speak to this. You state your name and the town you live in for the record.
Frank Commissioners, Kirby Robertson. I'm from Donley. Just a couple of points I'd like to make to the commissioners this morning. You know, a lot of this is predicated on a survey the commissioners put out, and the community, as would be the case pretty much everywhere in the country today, identified housing is an issue. Questioned what the response to that would have been had we said, are you prepared to increase your income taxes to pay for public housing? Because when we talk about ARPA funds, I've heard in this conversation repeatedly today, these are ARPA funds, they're federal funds, they're state funds, they're county funds. They're not. They're your taxpayers, they're your constituents' dollars, right? And, you know, this set of funding, ultimately, I'm not convinced that public should be funding housing. The Trust is a great program. I'm fully in support of what they're doing, but I'm not convinced that public funds should be used to fund housing. You know, these funds represent debt. If any of you have watched the news lately, we have a huge, huge deficit in this country today. So what we're looking at doing is taking a million dollars, transferring a public asset to a private entity with this request, with no in-kind consideration coming back to the taxpayers, other than this idea that we're going to have three or seven units towards the need of 1,500. These funds are not repeatable under this. This is a one-time shot. My question is, what have we done as a group, including the Trust, to identify resources through IHFA where we could put these funds into a repeatable, lend-able fund, as opposed to just dumping it out once, potentially to pay for employees with, you know, and we've all employed people, every one of us in this room likely, and we recognize that sometimes employees are successful and sometimes they're not. So the idea of us taking public funds to a private enterprise that's unrepeatable funds, no consideration back to the public for those funds to hire an unproven individual to take over and try to build this trust is something I struggle with. Additionally, I'm not hearing anything where the county is the one providing this million dollars, has any real control or say over the use of these funds once they go out the door. So in general, right now, I'm not wholly against us assisting the Trust, but what I am recommending to the commissioners is to take a pause. I recognize there's some finite timeframe that is necessary to apply for these funds back in the state of Idaho, but I would strongly recommend a pause on the decision to release these monies immediately and give the county some time to look at additional options to help this group complete this housing instead of just taking unrepeatable funds and dumping it out to a private enterprise with no consideration back to the taxpayers.
Thank you, Kirby. Appreciate it.
I heard him say he'd make a loan from IFB. That's what I heard him say.
Here is Lane Lake Fork. I wish that's as eloquent as Kirby, but I'm just not. I'm more blunt, so I'll just say what my concerns are. I applaud the commissioners for dealing with this problem. I also applaud WCM Housing Trust. I don't know much about them, but their intents are good, and I'm not criticizing that. But as a conservative, I have some concerns, and I'd like to address them to you today. It's concerns about taking taxpayer funds where it's funding the existence by payroll or other means of any private group. I have a problem with that. If the money is given to the county, to a private group, the county would have to review the books and ledgers of WCM to prevent waste, fraud, and abuse. That would be your duty to do so. It is known that commissioners have addressed the problem of the county employment over several years. Being that the funds are taxpayer money, why don't we use it to address taxpayer employees first? Whatever's left over, give it to a Housing Trust, unless you have solved that problem. I don't know that you have, but I'd rather see that money go towards housing for county employees first. Then I have a few questions. What due diligence has the county done in reviewing the success of WCM with the monies they've already spent? Does their past experiences warrant such an investment? What is the ratio of money received from WCM to the housing currently created? I need to know that ratio because I see an entity. What does it cost to keep that entity alive? And are the funds given to that trust in ratio to what you could have built that building for today in the, in normal costs? If that ratio is good, then I applaud it, and it's something to look at. But in my experience, when you create these entities, they seem to suck the money out of the intent to where it's going. And they have created 13 houses over eight years. I'd like to know, with the funds they've received, what is that cost per unit? What have they created to see if this is a legitimate place to put county money? And I'm, if you dedicate that money, I would not give it to them, but hold it in county funds and let them make proposals to you individually and on their merits. You warrant funding the money either for actual property acquisition, actually building, or matching funds. I just don't think you give it to them totally. And Kirby answered a bunch of these other statements I was going to make. And one other thing is that you need a Housing Trust to manage these assets. I own rentals. There's a lot of property managers out there at 8% will manage this stuff. They'll collect the rent, they'll do the leases, they'll maintain the properties. They do all of that for you. And so the other question I guess I have, does the county need this if you're going to address your employee housing? Or can you do it like the private sector does and we just hire property managers to take care of it? So those are my concerns and not bad-mouthing your attempt or the Housing Trust. I'd just like to have some of these answered. Appreciate it. Thank you. See you up there, Neil.
See you, buddy.
Is there anyone else in the audience? I know we're kind of out of time. I guess my thoughts on this, kind of have to kind of go along with Gary's. I have a real hard time just giving some great folks a bunch of money and say, hey, good luck with it. Hopefully, we'll get some housing out of it.
And I am.
And I'm not against it, but what's in the back of my mind is we've got a study going on right now to look at remodeling this facility. We've talked about trying to get, you know, something better down at Fairgrounds, move the road department out, do some improvements down there. And I really think that Gary makes a very good point that we give this group a million dollars, do we spend a million dollars and build our own employee housing, county employees? I think there's some opportunities here. I don't like the fact that we got to make our decision today because we got this opportunity coming up in March. This should have been presented a long time ago if that was the case. I don't want to be rushed to make that decision, but as Pat knows, I'm a type A person and I like to look at everything. That's my feeling right now, but I want to encourage us to explore and look into this.
I'd like to answer their concerns, to actually share some more information.
So I can't finish my statement?
That's fine. I just didn't.
I think Kirby makes a very good point that if we're going to give this money back, that should be, give this money to you folks, that it should be some provision that we're paid back. Because this is taxpayer funds. This is my taxes and your taxes, that it should be paid back. That should be part of that consideration, whether we do that through the Idaho Housing Group or this group, but I think that's only a fair ask. And I'll stop there.
I'd be happy to answer some of those, just as far as being on the Trust for the last six years.
Yep, go ahead.
That way you could kind of stay a little bit in your position there. So Kirby and Gary, I'm 100% with you, born and raised Idaho, conservative through and through. I've had a little bit of it. Yeah, anyways, doing affordable housing. So a couple of things on private funds used for, or public funds used for private housing. There's really in the market that it doesn't exist. Developers, builders aren't building affordable housing because it doesn't make any sense, doesn't make any money. So there has to exist this need for a public-private. We don't want the public entities building and developing housing. That's how we got into our problems in the projects in 50s and 60s and 70s, housing that just deteriorated because no one cared about it and no one was on the hook for it. So the Trust, yes, is a private entity, does employ or does engage third-party management for property management. I'm with you both on the director position, and everyone who's been on the board from the beginning can attest that my position has been and continues to be to build the portfolio so that it can sustain itself and its own director and not have to come back here after you're asking for director funds. As far as how much money we receive per how many units are on the ground and the cost to maintain the Housing Trust, on an annual basis, our cost is about, I think it's $12,000 to $13,000 in portfolio insurance that's insuring all the properties. We have $4,000 or $5,000 in accounting. That's our IRS 990 returns, accounting, audits, et cetera. And we spend another couple thousand bucks on website maintenance slash admin stuff. So we're really operating the Trust on 15-ish thousand a year, because again, I'm in the same boat. Last thing I want to do is give money to someone who's going to go spend 80% of it on admin and enrich their pockets and not get anything done. My whole goal has been from the beginning, get units on the ground, get the portfolio to fund itself, then you can bring in those people, and then you're not really running a foul territory, asking people for money so I can pay this $80,000 a year salary of a person of who knows what they're doing every day. So 100% agree with you, with you both on those positions. Our financials are audited every year by Idaho Housing and Finance because the 12 of operating outside of the one town home in McCall are all on loans to IHFA and require CPA prepared financials and tax returns. So those all get audited through IHFA. I'm not saying the county should rely on IHFA, but we'd be more than happy to provide those same financials out to the county. Regarding payback, we're, the structure we're with with IHFA on these projects have been 50/50 cash flow notes at 1% interest, do-on-sale. So I have no concerns about getting into something with the county because I've also been a proponent of IHFA not just giving their money away. Been around for 30 years, 40 years, and had they put them on loan paybacks, 40 years later, you have a revolving fund versus just whatever HUD decides to give you. So IHFA started doing this about 10 years ago, required paybacks, and even if it's, like I said, 50/50 cash flow, do-on-sale, eventually those funds are coming back and they're able to loan those back out. I do think that is a wise decision on the county's front, be one that I, as a board member, I can't speak for the whole board, but I can speak for myself that I would agree with that position and that we can do deed restrictions for the workforce housing to be used for local housing, similar to what we did in McCall, that McCall put together. And then you could do a do-on-sale note. My only hesitation there is that the county then puts something in play that restricts those funds for nothing but affordable housing into the future. The state of Idaho back in the early 90s created a Housing Trust Fund and haven't put a dime into it since then. So the money just gets pushed to other places and housing becomes a backburner option until all of a sudden everyone's freaking out about it. So I'm game to personally add and support a payback to the county, assuming or with the structure that the county would then utilize those funds as a fund in itself to further housing. I think I kind of covered just about everything through there, but just want to help you guys understand that our goal is to put housing on the ground, not to pay a director to sit and play solitary for 20 hours a week because we're still small. Where we're lacking on the director side, where I can understand the need, is we are in a volunteer situation. Most of us still work in 60, 80-hour weeks, and so to get out and kiss babies and feed the bushes for donations, that's something I've struggled with, and I know our board has struggled. So we do see a need on that front of someone who's constantly out there trying to find funds. But again, happy to answer further questions via email or if you have them here, but our goal, my goal, is to put units on the ground. It does create a subsidy for your workforce because our rents are going to be 30%, 40% underneath the market, and our town home in McCall is a $1,300 a month rent when they're going for 1,800. So our goal is to stay underneath. That does create a long-term subsidy to the renter, which is a overall subsidy to the private taxpayer. That does create a long-term subsidy to the renter, which is a overall subsidy to the private taxpayer. But I'm with you. I don't like paying taxes any more than you guys do. So if we're gonna pay taxes and the funds are written and they spend the nine trillion dollars, let's use it as best we can.
And Chance, and I can't speak for the board either, but you know, the concern about housing for county employees. I think the conversation could be had that these three units in Cascade have first priority to county. Or maybe local governmental agencies or something like that, so that we actually are identifying and addressing the county employees first before we put it.
I think that's a good idea. Just just need to double check with our fair housing attorney side to make sure that we can restrict to county housing. You know, county employee or federal or whatever governmental employee housing versus. I'd be good with that as well.
So that.
Question?
I heard him, well, not so much question, I heard him talk that it was thirteen hundred dollars a month. That's pretty much max for people that can rent, they're gonna be for affordable housing. Is that what this is what this whole? What you're proposing is like these other thirteen units, are you keeping this down at that? At that regimen?
We, the goal would be less. So Sherry asked that same question when I proposed how we got to where we are on the rents. Because she's going, well, why can't we pull a loan from Idaho Idaho First Bank or another entity? So that that project in McCall does have, it was a four hundred thousand dollar purchase. I put my real estate commissions in, McCall put fifty grand funds in. First put in, I think it was ten thousand and McCall. So basically, we took all the subsidy we could and stacked it all down and got down to a purchase price and we had some cash. So we got to like two hundred and twenty-five thousand on the loan. And what I was doing was backing into, here's the rent we're trying to to target, but I still have to cover debt. So a thirty-year mortgage is a very different payment fifty-fifty cash flow note. So on the Broken Ridge Town Home, we had, that's where I had to get to in order to cover all the expenses and cover the mortgage side. On a fifty-fifty payback, our rents on our units, for instance, in Donley, we have four out there in the in the West Mountain. And I think those rents are somewhere around the nine hundred range. So my goal would be to get as close as possible as that thousand dollar a month range. And that's really, you're taking your expenses and trying to keep those as low as possible and then still making some sort of cash flow payback. But this isn't, this doesn't make the housing trust a pile of money. I think overall, last year, we did about twenty-two to twenty-three thousand in net income out of the thirteen units. And that was prior to paybacks that we cash flowed about twelve thousand, ten to twelve thousand last year. So again, it takes some time and we're not trying to get rich off the. The goal is affordable housing, so nine hundred to a thousand would be the target, not the thirteen, fourteen hundred. Because I think that's at the high end of of Valley County's renter.
Oh, yeah. No, that's awesome.
So I understand all the concerns in the room. My concern is I've been working on local housing for eight years. There is a moment in time when you gotta just do something to move forward. And we have a one-time opportunity with ARPA funds to do this. It is, this is one-time investment. We're not asking for a future investment, so no funding for salaries, any of that type of thing. I think we can take care of some employee housing at the same time while not putting that underneath our purview to manage. Because I think it's important that we have a separate manager. We've already addressed that with the two houses houses that we currently own. And I I feel like this is a moment where we should make a decision. And this is a tough decision, but every single conversation we have talks about housing. People cannot hire. We can't find sustainability. And I I think that this is a moment in time to do this. So I will make a motion that we approve ARPA funding for one million dollars to the West Central Mountains Housing Trust and follow the conversation that we've just had to find, to make it so that no payroll is funded with these, that there is an annual audit of this entity, that we identify that county employees get first priority. And that these funds a discussion can have as far as a loan repayment the way that it is currently in place in order to provide a long-term funding source for local housing in Valley County.
You know, before I want to second that, I I got some questions here. And a lot of it in my life is like on school board and different things, just people wanted to build stuff and it was always sustainable. What is it sustainable? Because like I said, ARPA funds are one-time shot. What is sustainable down the road for, say, the West Central Mountain Trust? Sustainable down the road for bringing in funds? And what is Jackson Hole, what do they bring in? Where do their funding come from? It's not coming from.
No. So the sustainability portion of it is first of all, making a cash flow every year. So right now they have a sustainable model with their existing cash flow. Chance just said they get, you know, net assets of twelve thousand dollars a year. We've got to put more units in that trust in order to create a higher sustainable cash flow. That's why the, I mean, if if we were to use the entire million dollars to build these units in Cascade, there would be three units that you'd have monthly cash flow from.
Right.
In order to find that sustainability. But I mean, the whole goal is to find that highest return on the investment. The whole goal of this is to put units on the ground as fast as possible in order to help the current situation. Jackson Hole actually has a thousand units, they have a huge influx. But they also have a huge philanthropic community. We've never asked our community as a regional effort to invest in housing. And that conversation needs to happen. How many people are willing to put funding behind this in order to get units on the ground?
That's, I mean, that's gonna come with the hate to say it, but the wealthy that are moving in here.
Yeah.
Because I'm locked into that construction cycle. I see that that that's gotta be discussions, it's gotta come.
Absolutely.
They want people to mow their lawns and do all the stuff that affordable housing people take. They need to step up to the plate.
Absolutely.
To me, that's the, that's the piece that's gotta be sustainable. Yeah, the million dollars, yeah, it's it's a lot of money, but you're right. Because what I look at is, okay, we build three units. How do we build more? You know, because three units, only gonna get three units. Are we talking duplexes? Are we talking apartment complexes? What are we talking?
What is currently. Go ahead, Chance.
It's a triplex. So and then quick on Wyoming, on Jackson Hole, yeah, they have some single family. But a lot of these housing finance agencies require tax credit developers to partner up with local nonprofits. And so they'll get loaded in as a percentage of the general partner and catch some of that cash flow and then say, oh, well, we've got thousand units. Six or seven hundred of those, I don't know exactly their portfolio. But a lot of these, as I see in these other states, a lot of those units are gonna be similar to the Northwest Passage in Donley or the Springs in McCall, where they're a co-owner inside there with a developer. So they're catching a little bit of cash. I think that's a great opportunity for us in the future. As tax credit development continues to roll forward in Idaho. It is difficult in rural areas right now, the way IHFA's plan is. But yeah, the sustainable model is continue to put units on the ground. Use that cash to put more units on the ground. Granted, the twelve thousand seems low. Four of those units are in New Meadows at thirty percent area median income. They are for called housing trust funds, they're specifically for people who are at risk of being homeless. Those rents are like three hundred and ninety dollars a month, three hundred and eighty dollars a month. So there's hardly any cash coming out of those units. And we just built those, used those funds mostly to procure the which brought about eighty grand, sixty to it is like sixty-five thousand in cash into the trust that we then leveraged into McCall. So there's gonna be projects we'll use with IHFA that's the main source of funding right now for any affordable housing. There's some with federal home loan banks, but IHFA, HUD, that's that's it. I mean, unfortunately, there's just not nothing out there statewide yet. A lot of the states have housing tax credits, but Idaho doesn't.
So all these these units that you're talking about, they're inside the city limits where they get city services? Is that where these are at?
The housing trusts?
No, the the proposed units.
Oh, correct. These are at Raven Ridge, which you guys just approved that plat with Cody Draper here a month or so ago.
That's actually City of Cascade approved it.
City Cascade, sorry. So yeah, these are, these are in Cascade, so these are build-ready lots. He's got preliminary plans put together. Sat down with him, went through plans, went through costs, et cetera. So that was one thing I didn't mention and Sherry covered it. The proposal that's out there has no money in there for a director. That is to build those units to cover a little bit of architecture work, some soils, some little bit of legal work to get the paperwork sorted. The other thought I had on that, on the funds coming back to the county. We have a hundred and twenty-some thousand dollars in cash sitting because Johnny Howar, who's on our board graciously donated a condo early on. And we did, we restricted the sale of that condo and any proceeds to be utilized in Cascade only. So that's something that I would be one hundred percent on board with, what I think we should do if the trust sold these funds or these houses ever, that those funds had to stay in Cascade, that they can't just get absorbed back in. And they have to be used for housing. They can't be used for admin or anything else. That's something we did with Johnny, that's why those funds are sitting there. And that that allows for a forward sustainability to make sure those funds don't just get sucked up into admin.
Right. Chance, can I ask you, why wouldn't the county be, wouldn't it be smarter for us just to pay you to go across the street behind the jail and build that triplex there? We own the ground, there's no expense. I mean, to me, that makes more sense than what you guys are trying to do. You're building this for county employees, they're gonna have the first shot, why not just build our own?
It's a good question. In my experience, counties, I mean, counties and governments aren't designed and set up to be managing housing, developing and managing housing. So I get you could go third-party and have someone build it, have someone manage it, et cetera. At the end of the day, the housing trust is the one on the hook with its reputation and et cetera to keep those units up and running. I think those projects were great for match into IHFA. So those are types of projects where we want to say, hey, let's hold on to that. The funding becomes from IHFA that we can leverage that match of that dirt to then go to IHFA and say, hey, look, we've got a chunk of dirt the county's thrown in against this project and build that project as well. I guess is what I'm getting at. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does. I think to me that that gives something back to the taxpayers.
Yeah. And there, you're getting stuff here, like I said, in the form of a long-term rental subsidy. So in this case, you're talking for three to five hundred dollars a month in rental subsidy to those potentially three families that are living in there. So there is a, it it's a lot, it's a different way to look at that subsidy long-term. But I think that parcel that you're talking about behind the jail, that's a conversation that needs to be had and loaded into IHFA's next round of, hey, give us another one point one million. We just proved out, we built this triplex here, it worked out great. This is our budget, we know exactly what it's gonna be, go back to IHFA, if you got dirt, we want to build another one.
Has the City of Cascade been offered any money towards this?
I'm not aware of that.
Offered or requested from them?
Well, they, yeah, you asked the City of Cascade?
Not yet, but I, if we get approval, I would think we would go in and ask them to contribute the sewer hookup fees. You know, something that they actually have.
What is set up for down? I mean, we were talking and using taxpayer funds and that's a bit of a rough, we understood that. But to get it off the ground, I don't have a problem with that. But down the road, you know, we're not gonna have that anyhow. I mean, what's the process of like doing like, you know, like you said, Jackson Hole, bring in funding to keep this sustainable, to keep this operating down the road?
Well, that's why.
It's a huge need.
Absolutely. So when the Economic Development Council was started, it was a volunteer board. And it was really difficult to accomplish tasks. So we went out and partnered with the state and the county to create an executive director position. And Lindsay is that position now, and we have accomplished so much in the last eight years that I've been involved. That will be the same thought with this. We are going to have to find a funding mechanism to put somebody on full-time to focus on housing. I understand everybody's concern with doing that with this, and I have no problem with stating these funds will be to put new units on the ground. And eventually the housing trust will have to go out and find philanthropic funding, find corporate structure funding. I've worked with the MCAR, the Realtors up here to find funding. There's going to have to be an additional funding structure put in place to put somebody in place to help run this and make it sustainable in the future. But that's the whole point about putting units underneath our purview is that we are creating a sustainable trust for the future. And that's why, you know, I would disagree with doing with government funds and and just using it for the county. We have to find a sustainable structure moving forward, and this allows the trust that opportunity to do so. It's regional in nature, it's, you know, this is for Cascade, but this is the West Central Mountains Housing Trust. They still have two lots that are already paid for in New Meadows. But what they're trying to do with this project is put projects in every community and grow every community's projects instead of just using one. So this is a part of finding sustainability in the future. It's gonna be a huge conversation and why we just added seven board members and hope to add two more. The board as a whole are going to have to go out and find additional funding sources and resources to move forward.
Is that, I mean, I don't like re a bit and a wheel, I mean, you guys probably be talking to the people in these other areas like, you know, like you said, Jackson Hole. Say, okay, what was your mechanism? What what did you guys do?
And have. And I've been in contact with them continuously through this process. I just got all of theirs, I I should have shared it prior to this meeting, but we have their whole pro forma. We have everything that they do in order to be sustainable. And, you know, we will be using a lot of those things, IHFA, we are a partnership with IHFA. So there is ongoing conversation surrounding this. Lindsay Harris with the EDC is working on housing and trying to find sustainability there. And I don't, you know, El, I think your point's well taken. I think maybe we should get together and figure out what that funding structure looks like to repay these funds. These are federal funds that came back to us, these are our federal tax dollars coming home. And we need to spend them in a way that the community thinks is important, which they do. And that, you know, we can find sustainability moving forward. So I think some kind of payment, you know, payment source repayment to recreate a revolving loan fund, I think is really important.
I think you made some good points, Sherry, but I think there's not all the communities in favor of this. I think that, you know, with, as I stated earlier, with our plans for this facility and our fairgrounds and all that stuff. I would, I would think that should be our priority first to see if we can get some of that stuff done. And then if there's any left, look at that, look at this. And I'd be willing to do that. But we did do, what, seventeen units up here above the school? We we gave the tax break to that development. And we do have some affordable housing in the county, in this end of the county right now. My thing is, is you know, even perpetua has come in and said, we're just gonna pay our people more so they can compete for that housing. Well, that's not really a solution, but that's the solution is to pay folks more so they can afford to live here. And nobody wants to go that route. And to me, you're, if I'd have been in your group, I'd have been approaching Albertson's and D nine and the Forest Service and Cascade Medical and St. Luke's to say, hey, if you have any money now that could help us do this function. I think to come to the county first and ask, and then then we're gonna go out later and ask philanthropically for more is kind of backwards to me. But this is not federal tax money, this is our tax money. And our kids and our grandkids are gonna have to pay this all back someday. And and I just have a hard time with subsidizing housing costs for employees. My other concern is is that, you know, some of the statements about these are low-income folks that are on, you know, have substance abuse issues and stuff like, whoa, wait a minute, that's not the kind of housing we want to build either. So and I'm old-fashioned, I'm gonna tell you that right now, I'm a very conservative. But I I think just to give some group a million bucks and go build some housing is not the way to do that personally. But you have a motion, do we have a second? Because we need to move on.
Well, I've I've got all the. Well, I've, I've got all the information I need and for starting right out and for employees that I have, affordable housing is important. I think I'll go ahead and sec up this motion and get this moving forward.
Hey, we got a motion in a second. Is there gonna-
I say one thing before we vote?
Sure.
I didn't mean to interrupt the momentum, but my recollection of the motion is there's gonna be several conditions placed on this transfer of dollars. I recommend that you consider making an additional portion of that motion, that there be some type of agreement or MOU that will memorialize those conditions that we can draft and, and have, uh, presented to this trust.
So then, um-
I will amend my motion.
I think that's a very good, that's where I was gonna go next, Brian, and I appreciate your input, is the fact that I, I like, I don't know if it was, um, whose idea it was, but we keep the funds in a separate trust and they come and ask for them as they need them. I think that's a very appropriate, you know, otherwise we're gonna end up with, um, well, I'm not gonna go down that road, but this has happened in the past with, with, uh, forest funds that disappeared and people went to jail. So we gotta be very careful how this money is handed down to this group.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not wanting to go to jail, so I'm happy to submit a draft instead of that. So you guys have all the invoicing and see exactly what you're paying for on a, on a monthly draw basis.
So would you amend your motion and do put some conditions?
Yes, so I will amend my emotion, my emotion. Throatian slip somewhere there. My motion that we prepare a memorandum of understanding with the housing trust with conditions placed upon these funds and that these funds remain in a separate fund that will be used to pay monthly draw requests in order to accomplish this, uh, housing project.
So I guess theoretically what we're doing now is we're just approving or denying the concept of giving a million dollars towards the housing trust. We're gonna come back and set up an MOU because I think there's more than just separate funding. I think there's some other things that we need to consider in this as well as part of that MOU. Is that kind of your feeling?
I guess what this does is this commits funds so that we can move forward and apply for I-HFA funding and state funding knowing that these funds are available.
Anybody else have any ideas? Hey, well, you got a motion in a second on the floor. Well, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, I'm gonna oppose this and I want it in the record. Please, Doug, thank you. Thanks, everybody, for your input on this. Um, we'll certainly follow this one pretty close. Um, we got more to go on our agenda, so. The next one is, uh, an action item. Cindy, come on up. This is, uh, Resolution 2307 Valley County Waterways Management Plan. Good morning.
Hello.
You sent this to us, didn't you?
I did. It's-
Where is it?
Uh, 202307, the 2022 Valley County Waterways Management Plan. It was a resolution sent to you, uh, reviewed by Oki. Oki reviewed it also.
Well, this basically accepts and adopts the 2022 Waterways Management Plan here to as Exhibit 1 and does hereby direct Valley County staff pursue inclusion into the Valley County Comprehensive Plan.
Yes.
Any questions for Cindy on this?
And I can't find your email.
Um, it was 213. Well, go across.
Do you have a copy to sign, Chairman?
Um, I don't know. No, I don't think so. Um, Kevin or Kevin, do you guys have anything you wanna add to this or anything to say before we vote? You're all good with it?
I like that.
Kevin, is that some of what we talked about at the waterways? Maybe another day?
Okay.
So this just adopts the plan? It doesn't change any ordinances? It doesn't put any laws in place? It just adopts it and puts it into our comprehensive plan?
No, it, it just adopts it with direction to get it into the comprehensive plan.
And I think one of the whereas kind of explains it all, whereas the 2022 Valley County Waterways Management Plan is a guidance document for the management of various uses of the Valley County waterways, including boating, fishing, and other recreational activities intended to serve as a starting point for the future development of policies, ordinances, programs, and practices for specific water bodies. So this will give us the ability now to come back and start actually building some ordinances and regulations on lake management. Okay. I'll go ahead and make the motion. We approve, approve Resolution 2307 Valley County Waterways Management Plan. Do we have a second?
A second.
You can second it. Any more discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And, and then when you memorialize that, Clark Miller, um, would you please make sure the current one is scanned in?
Is this not the-
That's the resolution adopting this, and then this should be-
I'm sorry, what?
Take five minutes before-
You want me to scan that document in with that when we do the recording of this? Is that correct?
I, I sent the email to you, the current one, last week.
You don't have it, Doug? I have the whole plan. Do you want me to send it to you? Um, it's the one in your email, right? Well, we're only half an hour behind. Not too bad.
Play catch-up.
So we'll wait for Sherry to come back and then our next agenda item is an action item. This is our Recreation Advisory Committee members. Dave, you sent that to us.
I believe I'm on that committee, aren't I? Aren't I on that committee? Nope.
The service of the world. That person is not.
We're just canceling that whole agenda? Okay, thank you.
Any one few more minutes back?
Yeah, that helps.
Oh, yeah, I'm not on that one. Let it record for me. Got me on some committees. I don't know which one I'm on anymore.
You're in all of them.
It just feels like it. Uh, let's see. So the service-
Mr. Chairman, we are unneeded.
Happy anniversary.
Welcome back. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is to approve the Recreation Advisory Committee members. Dave or Larry, whoever's presenting, come on up. Sure. You want us down there?
Sure.
Um, I'm gonna take your mic again.
Yeah, here, you can take mine.
So we, we sent, we sent you guys, Dave and I picked 12 people and, um, sent them to you guys, and they're a little different. We got seven that we agree on. I thought that was great, you'd be honest with me. And, and we've discussed the ones we didn't agree on. We both were okay with them. We just wanted to give you guys the choice, you know, the final choice in there. It's difficult. It really is. It, uh, cause we're looking for quite a few different skill sets, you know, we gotta have, we gotta have management skill sets. We gotta have people that can, that actually know the ground. That's hard to find anymore, people that don't, that know the back country. Uh, we wanted some boots on the ground, people that'll go out and look at the projects that they recommend. And, um, so that's where we are. So we, that's what we brought to you guys, let you guys make a choice.
I would love to just say real quick before we go too far into it is that we had 24 people, 25 people. All of them were amazing people, and I was very, uh, reluctant to interview all 25 of those when we started. I thought that was a big ticket item for you guys to put on us, but, um, I think as we went through that process, we found a lot of just great folks, and then we were able to actually start funneling people into other, uh, programs. You know, some of them county-related, some of them nonprofits that are active in the area. So, yeah. I, it was great to get to know all those folks and we appreciate, you know, each one of them stepping up.
Yeah, they had skill sets for waterways. They had skill sets for pathways. And so we kind of looked at it like that, too. If this guy was really strongly in that direction, we kind of sent him in. And so this, this is what we came up with, and now we're gonna leave it up to you guys.
My question, and I, cause I forgot, is how many did we want for this committee? Was it nine or?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine.
We didn't really decide that, did we?
I think based on the number of people, like going with nine would be great.
I think nine would be, yes.
So have you identified nine?
We identified seven.
All of these I agreed with, but I also would love to see you add Mike Hire and Shane Henson to this list. Mike was on Dave's list. Shane was on Larry's list.
That brings us to eight.
And that brings us to nine.
Well, I already had Shane.
Oh, well, you've identified seven jointly.
Right.
By adding Mike and Shane. Mike is a dominant representative. He has worked in this type of a arena before. He actually developed ball fields in the past, so it gives another level of-
And tournaments, large-scale tournaments.
Large tournaments, yes.
So he brings a skill set, I think, that would be important to this. And then Shane just has such in-depth knowledge of our region and all of the people that are out there, been here for a long, long time, and I think he would be a good asset to this board, too, so.
I can't disagree.
That would be nine.
That'd put us at nine. And I, I, I have nothing against any of the folks that applied. It just really, we went through each of their resumes and-
I was looking for skill sets, too.
Yeah, and that's what it came down to, is a, representation throughout the county, trying to balance that out as much as possible. And then two is like the skills that we need or would like to have on this group.
I think one of the, uh, greatest parts of this is, is that we were really concerned because we're multiple recreation. We're motorized, we're non-motorized, we're rock climbers, we're geologists, we're, you know, we got all those. All these guys were multiple recreation. That was, that was good. That really helped out a lot. I never had time to do all that stuff. I know.
I know, exactly.
I got it.
I need a list of the seven that you already picked. Those are from this list, right?
Yep, they're the highlighted ones.
Jim, Emily, Drew.
Jeff, Eric, Cameron, April. Those were the seven that we agreed on, and then Sherry just gave us recommendations for two more. Well, yeah, it would add to the mutual list.
That was Shane and-
Mike Hire.
I think we just take their work for it. They're gonna be working with them, overseeing them. They interviewed all of them. I ask if there was anybody here that, you know, they, they felt strongly against or one way or another. I think we take the recommendation of our team and approve these members as we move forward.
It was really a lot of fun. It was a lot of fun meeting these people.
So now let's talk about what's your goals? Are you gonna meet once a month, once a quarter, where?
Once a month. Um, Dave and I have been talking. The next couple of days, we're gonna sit down and do a list of priority projects. Probably four or five projects, and then we're gonna bring them to this group and get their opinion on what is the most important and start working forward from there. That way we don't start from scratch. We've got something to work with.
And then you can update them where we are on some projects already.
That, and, uh, with, there's gonna be a lot of education involved because we gotta talk about grants, how grants work, where, where funding comes from and management of grants. There's just a whole lot of things involved. Talked about IDL, how IDL works, the BLM, ground that we're looking at works.
Say is bring them up to speed on relationships with the agencies. It's gonna be a huge part of it.
So, and you've already, I think you've sent us your top priorities, but you might wanna refresh me on that one, too.
We will set, as soon as we're gonna redo them. We've, we've got some new ideas. We always throw in new ideas.
Well, is Boulder Lake one of them?
Yes, Boulder, yeah, Boulder Road area.
Yeah, nothing like the Turkey Track. Might wanna rename it, but I think Turkey Track's pretty good.
Well, I think these are recommendations because I, I think, you know, giving them to them and then them being able to ferret out, bring back their ideas and, you know, what they wanna-
That's what I'm saying. I think we'll get some other ideas as well. So I think us bringing them up to speed on what we're interested in doing and having them help us kind of prioritize those and then think about things that we might have missed. And that'll give us, that'll give us plenty to do in the first year.
Oh, boy.
Well, and I think there's some other things that you need to talk about, too, as far as bylaws. If you miss two meetings or three meetings, whatever that magic number is around.
75%. If you can't make 75% of the meetings, I think is what it was.
If you can't make it, you're not on there. That's kind of like the coalition stuff.
We've already accepted the bylaws.
I know we talked about that.
Yeah, and what's gonna have to happen in the first meeting is they've got a, they, they've got to elect a chairman, and they should probably elect a secretary and decide when they're gonna meet. You know, we can meet in Lake Forest, we can meet here, but we're gonna let them make those choices. And, um, they'll just start working through it after, get, get that part of it done, then we can start moving forward.
So you'll be involved with all those meetings?
Every one of them, yes.
Um, one other thing that we have to discuss, and I, I don't know how you guys wanna proceed on that, is that we had asked or said that we needed to set this up as staggered terms for the first go-round, so we'll have some people that are gonna be elected out in one year, and some people will be two and three years, so that we don't have a full rotation of the board. So I don't know if you guys wanna make that decision or if we wanna do it at the first meeting.
We asked them, you know?
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah, the first meeting, I would ask who would be willing, and then if everybody wants a three-year term, then we come back and have some input into it.
I hope that's the case. Not everybody wants a one-year term.
Yes.
I was being positive.
Well, and I think as you have started having meetings, you're gonna find out who's serious.
Really committed.
Absolutely. Just committed better work.
Yeah.
One thing we are gonna be challenged with is, uh, the hybrid meeting. We do have some folks from out of the area, or they're gonna, they're gonna be- One thing we are gonna be challenged with is the hybrid meeting. We do have some folks from out of the area or they're gonna, they're gonna be in and out of the area at different parts of the year.
You don't have enough broadband in Lake Fork to do that yet.
Well, we, we don't really have the technology at all right now within county, as far as I understand it, to set up a hybrid meeting completely. So I don't know if it's something like that or like the Owl.
So we need, yeah, what we need is, and I, I can, I can run a Zoom meeting on my personal computer, but we need, we need the Owl. That's gonna be the major thing that going forward. And until we get, and we are looking at getting broadband in a different way.
At Lake Fork?
At Lake Fork and at Francie Wallace and at Smith Ferry and what the cost would be. And we'll bring all that information. Of course, we'll go through Jeremy and then bring it back to you guys. But we're looking at a different way of doing that than we've been looking over the last couple of years. Because things are changing so fast right now. My gosh.
Ask Jeremy about the Owl because I, you know, I mean, if it's secure, we could use that in here.
Absolutely.
It's such much upgraded technology.
Yeah. It's not, it's very inexpensive now, too. It's.
I'm kind of a Zoom fan myself.
Well, it is on Zoom, but it gives the camera the ability to see everybody in the room instead of just.
So the camera will turn to the person that's talking.
Oh.
And that also keeps people from having side conversations all the time because it'll cut in on your side conversations, so.
And honestly, during commissioner meetings, instead of just seeing the back of whoever's presenting, you know, I mean, the Owl would just go to be able to see their face. So I think an upgrade to technology would be important.
What you're trying to do over there.
And that, that's, anyway, that's the direction we're going.
So have you even contacted Jeremy about this or that?
We've had little conversations about it, but I wanna get a finished product. I've actually got some volunteers that have decided to be a committee. And they're gonna come back with a package and we'll look at the package. I love volunteers. So they're gonna come back with a package and we'll see with everything, costs, everything.
Well, the other issue, too, and I know we don't do this for a lot of advisory, but some of this stuff maybe could, maybe we need to look at reimbursing the mileage. That's not something we do for a lot of our committees, but.
That's something we can discuss down the road.
Down the road, if, if that becomes an issue, let us know.
Somebody can participate.
Just Jeremy's over there at the OS. Valley County.
You see.
They had, they were doing Zoom. They had, you know, six or eight people up on the, you know. And so I know he's been doing that over there.
Well, that, that's not the issue. You can see everybody that's on a computer, but in front of them because the camera's pointed at them. What you can't see is the other 10 people in the room. And so the Owl allows you to have that connection point wherever.
For those hybrid, yeah, type of meetings. That's still, that's the new norm. I mean, I haven't been to a meeting in the last four or five months where it hasn't been partially online and partially live.
And it allows people from all over the country to participate. All the agencies that could participate and, you know, should be on this committee would allow them to participate, too. NPR can be online and, and doesn't have to be in the room, so.
I think it'll be good for the agency folks. And I also think it'll be good for, you know, we have some of the folks that maybe weren't on this list for board members that will be probably active participants. And they would wanna be able to zoom in from Boise or wherever they are.
We may not like the hybrid meetings, but it is the future.
Yes.
So of course, Valley County can be first again. Get her done.
Okay. We got our names. Let's go back and we'll make the motion.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you for everything and all what you've done so far on this.
So you got the names?
Yep.
Well, this time I'd entertain a motion to approve, and I think we should probably state their names for the record.
Mr. Chairman, I have moved that we approve the Recreation Advisory Committee members of Jim Klum, Emily Betton, Drew Kirsch, Jeff Masu, Eric Weiss, Cameron Cena, April Whitney, Mike Hire, and Shane Hinson to be on our advisory committee.
Second that. We got a motion. Second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thanks you guys for the interview and doing that part of it. We're moving right along.
Got back up?
Yay. So happy.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Our next agenda item was canceled. That was service reward. So we're gonna have a presentation from Commissioner Mopin regarding NICO Legislative Conference.
It will be really quick.
Tell me what NICO stands for.
The National Association of Counties.
National Association.
So the National Association of Counties has the same committees basically that the state has, but it's on a national basis. So when you go there, you talk about the national issues. But what's really important about being there is you get a chance to talk to either the head of the agency or the assistant head of the agents. So the first day that I went, it was a conference on, it was the Chief Information Officers for a county. So basically, they're a main division. And the main focus of theirs was cybersecurity. It is becoming more and more prevalent in the United States that cybersecurity is one of the major issues for counties and government. The hackers that are out there right now are, it's just, it's becoming very costly for counties to be able to recoup their funds. I'm familiar with two in Idaho that had lost ability to get into their stuff. And do you remember?
Lost their information.
Yeah.
Whatever was 70,000, I think, to get it back?
I was thinking it was even higher than that. So it's, and ICrimp now will not fund that. I mean, I think their, the max is like 5,000 or?
Yeah, that's about all they'll throw towards them.
It's, so it's very high or very low as far as what our insurance coverages are. And so this, I mean, they spent most all day talking about cybersecurity issues. And protecting your communities. So I did reach out to both Juan and Jeremy. And there is cybersecurity grants in place right now. And they did state that, matter of fact, one of them's due the end of this month. And the state itself gets funding. And in order for us to participate on that funding, they have to apply. Or all counties have to apply. So Jeremy is up on that. And Jeremy actually is, is getting everything in in time.
And we actually contracted years back with a company, I think, two or three years apart to come in and actually look at our security. And gave us kind of.
That's on all our.
Yeah. Where our weak spots were, so to speak. And it was kind of in the transition from David to Jeremy. And there, and I think most of that stuff Jeremy upgraded to and got done. But.
Remember?
I don't know.
During the economic summit, that guy gave a talk on, on security. Remember that? Pretty sharp, pretty sharp old boy.
Yeah. And he was, he was the CIO of, I think it was Baltimore, when they were hacked. And so, you know, he understood it. And that's why this is all coming out is that, you know, people with real life experiences are stepping forward and saying, you've got to do this work. You've got to do these things. So I think maybe next time during Jeremy's report, maybe we just ask him to update us on where we're at, on our cybersecurity risk, making sure that we have everything in place. He keeps continually, and what most people don't remember is that even if you buy a mouse today and attach it to a work computer, it has technology inside that can open the portal for bad actors to get in. So you cannot buy anything that is not approved by Jeremy's department. And, and make sure that, you know, everything is, is offsetted with cybersecurity risk. And so, I mean, laptop keyboards, I mean, any of that kind of stuff can open a portal there, so.
In security, it.
Different kind of security.
No, different kind of security. Not there, not there. That one's Jeremy's.
But we may wanna think about, maybe talk to him about some training. You know, I mean, I know that they fish. He fishes a lot with his emails and stuff to see who's, who falls for the bait, so to speak. And I think we may wanna think about maybe hiring that company back again, just to come in and check on us.
And didn't, didn't, didn't I remember doing some cybersecurity training? Wasn't there something that, I can't remember if ICrimp put it out or?
Yeah, it was ICrimp.
There was, yeah.
They came in, trained our people.
It was actually online training. You had to take so many classes per year in order to make sure that we were cybersecurity safe.
Sure.
So it might be time to re-implement that.
Thing.
But just asking Jeremy, you know, to give us an update on where it was. They felt it strongly enough that it was a full-day seminar. And the other thing that they trained on heavily was broadband. Broadband in the cybersecurity world is so critical. That all communities are doing anything they can to upgrade. And in the, the actual security world, the 911 systems that are coming in are going to be really critical. That counties are looking at those, making sure that they're upgrading to those, that there's a lot of time spent making sure that our law enforcement is talking to each other. And that those systems are in place. And everybody's spending the funding. A lot of it was about funding. There is a lot of grant money out there right now for these types of things. So I've been reaching out to McKenzie and asking her to be looking for some of these grants. So cybersecurity, broadband, those were the two things on that CIO day that they spent a lot of time and energy.
So when broadband comes in here, it's gonna bring in a whole new set of problems? Is that what they're saying?
No, it's that if you're not upgrading to high-speed fiber, you're going to have problems in the future. That broadband needs to be a focus to bring in this type of technology so that we can, we are all interconnected.
I follow you.
The 911 systems are all integrated and interconnected.
Okay. Got it, got it.
And then the next day was on community economic and wildfire, a lot of that. They talked a lot about the farm bill that's coming in. Part of that farm bill, 85% of it is SNAP. It's all nutrition-related. But there's 1% that's for rural development. And you can find funding for utility services, broadband, water services, rural business services, community development services. So they're saying it's a small pool of funds. Everyone's asking to make sure that that 1%, that we're researching how it can help our community. But the, the farm bill, which we spent a lot of time talking about the farm bill, has a lot of things in it that most communities don't understand that's in there for our capacity and our development. So rural development will be critical that we take a look at that.
They talk about, not to interrupt, sorry, but.
Go ahead.
Shoot, Doug, what was the funds we used over in West Mountain from the soil conservation? And they cut the funds with.
319 grant?
319 money? Did they increase that budget?
Is that Forest Service or is that the farm bill?
I think it's in the farm bill because it's funded through the Soil Conservation District. We did a lot of work on West Mountain with 319 funds. And then they dried up. We were doing $400,000, $500,000 a year through that program to work on.
I'll ask that again, see if we can figure out what that was.
How was that work being done?
Well, they basically built the base underneath the road, new cohorts, that kind of stuff. Got it ready to pave if we ever decide to pave it. And if I remember right, I think we only have like three or four miles to go and then we could pave that whole road. So we were using 319 money every year for that. So we're still short a lot or two. Three or four miles.
A lot more than that.
Well, is that part of, that's a little off-subject, but it, I mean, is. Is that part of the master transportation thing? Is if we start messing with that S bridge, we have to have a different route? Is that part of that?
Well, what the master trace, man, master transportation plan does is prioritize your next group of roads for funding. But you gotta get it on that list or it's not, never gonna qualify.
Right.
So that's what we're trying to do is figure out where's our next biggest S bridge, whether it's West Mountain North or whatever we decide those roads are. And then that, that'll get us qualified for grants. It's kind of like the Mercy Management Plan. We gotta have that all done in order if we get a road that washes out like these forks, that qualifies us for that grant to fix it. It's gotta be on that plan first.
At least gotta be in place. Okay.
And Sherry and I were talking earlier about West Mountain North from Tamarack Falls North to McCall. Has another route to get folks out of Tamarack is they don't wanna go across the S bridge. If the S bridge is under construction, that'll be the route.
That's where my thought is, is that when it's under construction, it's down for, could be a year. I mean, we don't know that.
At least.
And so we'd have to have a safe route to put people around.
Well, they can go south and north on West Mountain, but I think that.
You don't wanna go south.
That's gonna be, you know, in the frozen time of year, it's probably okay. But when the spring thaw comes and, you know.
Oh, yeah, it's a mess.
You do just wanna stay off of it.
Yep.
And there, as we talked about at the commissioner convention, there's all kinds of money out there right now. And we need to be researching those, the highway funding, all of that. USDA talked a lot about the fact that they understand that dealing with HUD, USDA is HUD, or Housing and Urban Development. And they're the ones that are doing all this IHFA funding and everything. And they know that their grant requests are so complex that small little communities like us are having to hire grant writers to get any kind of grant funding. So their focus over the next few years is gonna be trying to be making grants available to all and not just those that use grant writers. So it's gonna be less complex in order to get some of these USDA funds. And we all stood up and cheered. It was like, come on, guys. Now, this is really difficult. So the easy application, something they're working on. They went down a whole funding mechanism, which I had no idea. They spent all the time on housing because it's, that is the largest conversation in the country right now. And every single meeting I went to, that was all the conversation in the country and how it impacted every single bucket of information that we were talking about.
No, so you're saying housing, or are they talking affordable housing because the price of normal housing has gone through the roof?
Yes. And HUD is specific to that lower income, local housing. Levels, I guess, funding levels. They have rural partnership programs I've never heard of. The farm bill, actually, there was a request to include housing for the Forest Service staff to help Forest Service be able to maintain staffing levels. So there's something in the farm bill that's introduced that. They spent a lot of time on EDA planning, the Economic Development Association planning, which again got into broadband because the EDAs requirements for broadband specifically targeted those internet service providers, the ISPs, instead of local housing. And they realized they've done that. So they're taking another look at some of that broadband requesting in the EDA. I ask specifically the undersecretary to take a look again at that AMI. They need to increase those AMI limits.
What is that, Sherry?
The average median income. And that is a, that is a problem all over the country also. And we don't want more 30% units here. I mean, that is just something that there is, you get credit at IHFA for having some of those units in your portfolio because it's such a need.
That's the ones you're talking about in the medals.
In the medals.
Okay, yeah.
But there is so much wraparound services, so many wraparound services required.
Too much cost to it.
Yes. The unit that was destroyed was that 30% unit. And it cost the housing trust, it was like 30 or $50,000 to fix it because of the mental instability of the person living in that home. So we don't want more than.
And AMI also influences a lot of the health district funding as well. You have to qualify for some of that stuff.
I pushed a conversation around hero housing. All of our first responders, I think there should be a bucket of funds specific to first responders and our sheriff's.
Yeah, I've heard of that one before.
At 100 to 120% funding levels, I think the federal government owes those they're giving of themselves to the point that they are, our sheriff's department. I think that there should be a bucket of funds that specifically target housing for those individuals. Because for the most part, they're required to live in the communities that they serve. And now you just can't anymore. So I ask about that. That kind of piqued her interest. She was interested in that conversation. They went over all the different funding structures. Right now, CDBG funds for housing. If there is anything that we know of that can actually be retrofitted, there's a ton of money. Most places have old motels and hotels and that type of thing. We just don't have any of that. So that was really depressing because you can actually get five times the limit. So our $500,000 limit, you could go up to 2.5 million and some of that. So if we can think of anything that we can retrofit, that was there. They spoke a lot about ADU units and manufactured units. They're gonna push to actually make sure that communities can, and, and actually, I think the state legislature is talking about this now, but making it so that HOAs cannot restrict ADU. But making it so that HOAs cannot restrict ADU units. Um, the accessory dwelling units because they're such a need throughout the country. And manufactured housing is going to be. Where they are gonna focus a lot of funding in the future.
And I know, you know, the six oh two N N that we used on those, we tried to get them to do that for ADUs as well, but they had to be. Deed restricted to long-term rentals. They couldn't use them for short-term rental stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think it's awesome. That's the way to encourage that.
Um. Um.
Still. Holding that where you don't allow. Short-term rentals, we can actually do that.
You have to deed restrict property to do that. So the owner or the seller has to.
Deed restrict.
Accept that before you buy it. Basically, we can't make people do it unless they want a tax break, which is what six oh two N N is. And basically it says your first year, your only value that you only pay in ten percent of your value. Ninety percent is written off. The next year's eighty percent till it gets down to fifty percent and then your, your praise at full value, you pay full taxes after that. But you can take that money to build the development.
Mm-hmm.
We want them to do it for ADUs. That's a state tax commission thing.
Well, HUD's looking at a lot of that and finding out fair housing laws throughout the country are being looked at strongly. To make sure that um people are not restricting fair housing. And that is gonna be a conversation as we move forward. So we've got to make sure that we are meeting our fair housing guidelines and goals. And not, our ordinance is in no way restrict fair housing. And then I went to the lands meeting and a lot of that meeting had to do with forest on the fire. Um, they, the Forest Service is currently partnering with Youth Conservation Corps. And signing direct agreements with those conservation corps to be able to bring more youth into the forest to do the forest management work in the summertime. I hammered again on Title uh three funding because Title Two of that is where those funds go to the RACs. Uh, resource allocation committees that are local. And the, and the RACs are always doing the funding with the Youth Conservation Corps. So I said, instead of you guys doing it, send us the money. Through, you know, Title uh one, two, and three funding and let us do it locally on our own forests. So that was a good conversation with them. What really hit me and what I thought was awesome was they are going to be holding a lot of the SRS PIL funding conversations on the forest. And bringing people out of DC to actually see how those funds are impacting local communities that have those types of situations. Um, I think it'd be interesting to see how we could bring some of our legislators here. Put them in a helicopter, let them fly over, you know, this country and see what our forests, actually what the condition of our forests are and how they could help us. So, but the committees themselves, the Forest Service Committee in the House anyway. Is actually gonna have people on the ground throughout the country and get them out of DC to actually see how it's impacting us. And I thought that was great.
Hm, of course.
They are putting uh supposedly in the housing funding, they are gonna put money in there for the Forest Service. Because it's a hiring component they can't hire because of the housing situations. Um, again, that emergency declaration allows override of NEPA with no lawsuit flexibility. I thought that was interesting. Uh, those, they talked a lot about the mentoring and apprenticeship programs, trying to get future fire leaders in because that they are. Starting to see that people are not entering these uh careers. So trying to figure out how to enter those careers.
Did they talk about any on the, on the forest? They talk about any of the stuff where the, you know, the. The groups out here that throw out the frivolous lawsuits to shut down a timber sale, shut down whatever. Ways around that to be, so these forests can, foresters can start thinning our, our sixth, you know, force.
Yeah.
Because that needs to be done huge.
It does. The Forest Service has a little control over that though. I mean, basically that's a, a right. If you don't like what's happening, you get a sue. But I think the Supreme Court's actually hearing a case here shortly, which might set some precedents on some of that.
I think the issue that I have with all that litigation stuff is that if they win in court, they get reimbursed, their attorney costs reimbursed automatically. And if they lose, we don't get ours reimbursed, or the other side doesn't. And so there's not a lot of fair stuff in some of that. They built those into the laws over the years. It's like, I don't see equitable.
It's not fair, you know, like I agree.
Yeah.
You know, it puts all the weight on them to, it's like, man.
The other conversation is this, they're calling it the thirty by thirty land grab, which they are trying to. It's, it's a way to conserve farm ground, but they are trying to take thirty percent of the, of the. Land in the country and make it either um wilderness or conserved in some fashion by twenty thirty. And if you look at Idaho. There's a huge part of central Idaho that they're trying to include in this. So basically they're trying to make it wilderness, resource-based, and they told us to go back to our counties, see if we're included in that conversation. But to engage in a very large.
Yeah, more wilderness than any other state in the nation.
Well, it's not just that though, Neil, because if you look at a Forest Service ma'am now, especially Valley County. You see wilderness, you see primitive, then you see recommended wilderness areas.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe still have roads in on some development or some issue. And that's kind of been the kickback with perpetual is they're in an area that. They recommended for wilderness at one time. So I think that's one reason why they're fighting it, but. And even if it's a recommended wilderness, it restricts what the Forest Service can do when that hits the ground. Well, who designated this? Where did this start? Cause nobody knows.
Yeah. And how does it affect our economy and our state and all the things that are usage, you know, for our people? Have access to those areas.
Well, I think it's a way to subvert Congress because Congress is the only branch that can make wilderness.
Yeah.
But this is a way to kind of subvert that and this is, they're gonna have everything plate ready to go. So if they do get a Congress in there that says, we wanna take all this as wilderness. It's all gonna be inventory and ready to go and be bam, it'll be done.
Yeah, and that's.
I'm gonna leave this up here for anybody that wants to look at that.
So I disagree with that.
And then the other, the other biggest one was the GIS. And how counties have got to continue to invest in GIS or county government. Because what, what GIS does in every single layer, it, it's just huge what it can do and accomplish. So we just, they just really encouraged further in engagement with the GIS. And then unfortunately I got the flu. I was not able to see Biden yelling or somebody else. I spent a day in the bathroom in my hotel room and the next day in the hotel room. So I could not talk to our congressional leadership either.
Oh my goodness.
I was very upset about that. So anyway.
Fred gave it to you.
Uh, he didn't get it. I don't know what in the heck, but I would, I haven't been that sick in years. It's like, I was very happy about that.
Well, thanks for going back there.
It was a great conversation, the days that I was there. Oh, the Workforce Development Council, I, we also had great conversations about WDC funding and, and how that works. And you're seeing it now at the state level with the governor's recommendation for the eighty-five hundred dollars for every child to go out and get technical training if they choose. That is at the national conversation also. They understand now that not all kids are gonna go to college. COVID created a whole nother situation as far as kids in college and that interaction. And they are pushing CTE training at the national level.
And you know, I would think, you know, somebody like in Neil's position where you own a big electrical company and you hire. New guys, journeymen electricians, your program would qualify for them to fund that kid to come and learn.
Yep. I've already got two guys that are brand new apprentices that I've already given the launch information. And yeah, it's gonna help pay for tuition, to books, all, all the stuff. Cause it's pretty expensive to do that. So it's a, that's a great asset for, for those guys.
Well, and you'll start noticing in some of our bills that if you look into them pretty deep, the plumbers are probably getting more than the attorneys are now.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The trades are huge. Well, that was the other thing, the CHIPS Act. So they, they touched a lot on the technology hubs that were recently funded. Through the infrastructure bill. Micron is one of those hubs. So they're talking about um the apprenticeships that can happen in that. I mean, the Workforce Development Council already gave a presentation about a month ago. Micron already has everybody over in Taiwan training. And so when they start construction this next August on their new site with this chip funding, um I think it'll take them a year. And they are anticipating immediately starting to hire that level. So what the Workforce Development Council is doing is finding out, okay, what type of technology is going to be required? For people to be able to join these types of industry. And we will be focused on putting grants toward those types of talent. I mean, the people to build it will be your electricians, your plumbers. Welders are a huge thing right now. And so anybody who wants to go into the welding field is gonna find great capacity for that. So they're starting to look at those hubs and I think we as a county, it's incumbent upon us and actually as part of our strategic plan. To find out what type of talent we need. And Pat's already, uh, I think we have two apprentices right now or two mentorships set up in the county right now. And it's really critical that we do that as we move forward to figure out.
It's pretty apparent we need CDL drivers really bad.
Really bad. And um McCall school system recognized that. And they actually have apprenticeships now there for CDL drivers. And you can actually qualify locally now instead of having to go outside the area to qualify for it. So that was recognized as a huge need. So that was my synopsis. It was sixty-five degrees. I did not want to come home.
Were the blossoms out yet?
Almost. Versity was blooming.
Thanks for the update. We're gonna move on down. Our next agenda item is an action item. This is approval of the US Department of Transportation. Raise grant for Roseberry. Jeff, come on up.
Good thing I came up. I guess it could be both of us.
Sure, come on up.
She's the one that did all the work.
And she did a good job.
Then you just sit down and let her talk.
We can both do it.
No, we worked on it together.
Um, yeah, we just. We came up with it. We kind of blew out some numbers real quick and Kenzie did all the paperwork on it, got it turned in.
Now, this is for the metal bridge there between the S bridge and Donley.
No, this is for the S bridge.
Oh, this is for the S bridge?
Yes.
Only one point five million?
This is the plan.
That says Roseberry Road Bridge replacement.
Um, yeah, it's just the initial planning, right?
Yeah, this thing's.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got the email this morning from Cody, I'm assuming in my reply.
And I'm just reading it and I will send it to these guys.
Could you guys involved in going forward with this concept design so we, we can at least get more of a ballpark figure between ten and thirty million?
So I wanna give them an update really quick on this other idea. Um, Gary Swain came up with this idea. But instead of uh replacing that bridge. And it, as a full span bridge, his thought was, he didn't think that there was any live water stream coming into it. And that's what Jeff told me this morning, that Lake Fork Creek comes into that upstream. But instead of actually creating it so the boats can go underneath, why not try and do it as some kind of either a culvert or some kind of a design that just creates. Like a sanctuary above it, allows it to back up um above it, but not allow boating access or any kind of access up there. So would that change the construction of the bridge? So I haven't read all this yet, Jeff, but I'm assuming Cody is saying.
So when the water's full height, you can't get a boat under there anyhow, can you?
No, it's illegal to have one pass that bridge anyways.
Right.
So why create a bridge? What are we, what are we creating then?
You're spanning the BOR property.
Exactly. And I, you know, trying to have a conversation with the BOR to find out why it has to be a full span. When there's nothing that's gonna go underneath there anyway. Alls it is is allowing backup water in that flow of the lake creek.
It's, it's. It's a live water, wetlands. And BOR is really picky on. Putting fill material like they did back in nineteen sixty-two or whatever. Rocks cheap, short bridges cheap. One thing to look at is maybe widening the causeway and putting a wider bridge in there.
You could do that with a covert too, couldn't you, Jeff?
We don't want culverts in there.
I wouldn't think not because you have so much water going back and forth and back and forth.
Problem is it, all that water comes out of the Donley area, which has a lot of iron in it. I mean, you could put plastic culverts in or concrete covert. There's many ways of doing it, but that's more of a, I think we need to come up with this concept with half a dozen different ideas and. Figure out what the BOR is gonna allow us to do. You might say, no, no fill whatsoever before in ordinary highway high water mark. Which is four feet below the bridge. The new bridge wouldn't be any higher than that, still couldn't get anything under it.
And there's a sewer line and a phone line that comes across that bridge too, right?
Two sewer lines, communication lines.
That's why I think we leave the S bridge and replace it as a fishing bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Don't move that off, just put a new bridge in it.
Larry and his crew take care of it as Parks and Rec.
Something like that. Oh, I definitely think that we need to start a conversation about this and uh get, get some conversation going. So I appreciate your research and what the grants are and. And if there's anything out there that we can actually.
So what is the one, just from, bring me up speed, what's the one point five supposed to accomplish?
Um, just the beginning, the planning and, you know, engineering of it, the design, the concept really. Um, and this grant is great because it's zero percent match, but we did find another grant, um, that's like a seven point three four percent match. That would actually be the construction of the bridge. This one's just for the planning.
So what you're saying, Jeff, is we, we need to actually come up with a game plan.
Yeah, I mean, now, now's a good time to do it. Come up with. Sit around with parametrics and BOR whatever, or we just kick parametrics loose on it and say. Start coming up with these six different ideas, box culverts, bridge. They'll contact BOR people. They'll know what they're gonna let us do and what they're not gonna let us do. Just to give you an idea, Neil, the Epstein Bridge. So far we've got four hundred thousand dollars in that in the engineering and environmental studies. That's a little itty bitty eighty foot long bridge.
Yeah.
With this one point five, like Kenzie said, that's, that's just gonna get the ball rolling.
Well, now what it does is perfect timing because then we can actually fold that into the master transportation plan and know, you know, how that all fits. And then actually while I was at um the commissioner convention, I took Cameron to breakfast and what's the other guy's name? I don't remember.
Oh.
The other guy's name is.
Chase.
Chase.
Yeah.
Um, to breakfast and we all just had a conversation about funding this type of thing. So they're gonna come up with some ideas. On different funding structures for all of this and try and fold that into that master transportation plan too. Since we're already having community conversations, we may as well be having conversations also about what the community would support as far as funding mechanisms.
This raise grant, you might want to explain to them what is and how much is in that bucket. Wasn't it like two hundred million dollars?
Oh gosh, I don't remember that number.
This is, this is a very, very huge number that comes, I don't know from the feds or from the state, but it's part of that big infrastructure bill stuff.
Ah, and Sheri, you also sent it to me, so I think you're familiar with the grant.
We can tie commerce to it, which is huge on these big grants. If we can tie commerce to it, we've got Tamarack out there.
And I seen that, and that's my thought process is making that a straight shot all the way across there. Because there's so much proving homes over another side, for one thing, and then Tamarack just blowing up.
Even if we had, if we left the road where it is and just had a wider bridge, I think that would solve a lot of our.
Widen that whole thing out to forty foot.
Yeah.
That, that would also take care of it, but that's also gonna mean we've gotta put more fill.
Put more fill and.
Water body to widen that out. I mean, that's, I can see six different things in my head right now that it's a possibility.
Yep.
And if we straighten it out, how fast the car is gonna be going?
Yeah.
That would be the.
It's not, that's not our problem.
They're not sitting back there anymore.
But then that's the whole road. I mean, the whole road's gotta be.
There's many different.
Sure. Got it.
I think getting the engineer engaged and involved in giving us some ideas is the right, is the right moment in time to do that. I'm fully in supportive.
I am too. I think we gotta get started somewhere.
Yep.
Um, my question, the bridge in between the, the mud creek that washed out, are we gonna be having to do anything to that? The one that has the wire grate floor?
We, I've kinda talked to Cody about it. What I'm understanding is those grates were supposed to be temporary. And then they were gonna pour a concrete deck on that. And there's our. That bridge you're talking about on West Roseberry, if you look, there's an eight foot. Spansion, I guess, on the south side of that bridge. It was made for a pathway.
Pathway, yeah.
Yeah. So it's, it's already there. Everything's there. It's nothing wrong with the bridge, just that decking that.
And that's my question is every time you drive over. And that's my question is every time you drive over it, all the salt on all the tires is going to.
I, my welders were up there for over a week last year, welding this stuff back together.
It's time to get concrete on it? Is that on your list?
No.
Can you rephrase that? Are you putting that on your list?
I think it should be coming on it, especially when we replace the S bridge. That bridge is going to get pounded to death then because we're going to dump a lot more traffic on it.
Oh, yeah.
So that's the next one to look at too.
I mean, we're not going to dump more traffic on it by replacing the S bridge, but it's.
Faster.
It was kind of, it was built right but wrong. We're talking about the, you drop onto it.
Right.
So all these loaded dump trucks and stuff are, I mean, it needs to be, that whole road needs to be reworked.
They're just hammering that thing.
Yeah, I mean, if we got to raise that bridge, then we pour, pour that, pull that whole deck off and put some.
I think that's something we may want to incorporate into the S bridge deal. Because if you're going to close that, you, you may want to put that in part of the project because it does, you drop down off there and you hit that thing hard.
You hit, try it in a loaded dump truck.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Lift you out of your seat?
Uh, yeah, you bounce your head off the ceiling.
Yep.
I think while raise grants are available, we need to look at anything that we can use as far as those raise funding.
Because it's zero percent match. Tons of money in there to start.
Hey, well, this is an action item, so we.
She, she is doing an awesome job.
Thank you.
I've heard that. Congratulations. That's high praise from him. We never get praise from him. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the US Department of Transportation raise grant for the Roseberry Bridge replacement application.
I'll second that.
Who did second all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Good job, Mackenzie.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
And are we also covering the two things that need signed from Four Corners or is that a little bit later?
I don't have it on my agenda.
On the agenda.
Oh, it, oh.
What, what have you got there?
It might be Doug's signature that I need. I need to talk to Gabby about it. So never mind. It's good. Okay, thank you.
Alrighty, thanks. Anything else, Jeff? You got seven more minutes.
I'm going to tell you a break. I said, you better hurry up.
That's all you can think of.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing I can't wait till next Monday.
So then we will adjourn or mute and we'll see everyone back here at one o'clock.